Good afternoon. This is Director Rankin. I am calling the board's special meeting to order at 4:30 PM. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on ancestral lands and traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. For the record, I will call the role. Director Mack is unavailable today and Director Harris, I have been told, will be joining us shortly. Director DeWolf, are you on? Director Hampson?
Here.
Director Hershey?
Here.
Director Mack? Oh, sorry, she's not, I already said she's not gonna be here. Director Rivera Smith?
Present.
And Director DeWolf, do we have you on? All right, we will, oh, Director DeWolf is having technical issues, but he is here. And this is Director Rankin.
Director Rankin. Director Rankin, Director DeWolf here was able to get on, thank you.
Great, thank you. The superintendent is also present as well as staff who will be presenting as we move through the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely consistent with the governor's proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. Hello to everyone who is joining us today. To facilitate this remote meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. There will not be a public comment opportunity. Staff will be working to administer the meeting and may be muting participants to address feedback to ensure we can hear from directors and staff. We will begin with an oversight work session on technology services today, followed by an operations committee of the whole meeting, which will be chaired by Director DeWolf. And just briefly, directors, I spoke with Chief Financial Officer Jolynn Bergy right before we started this call and we decided to move through the entire presentations and hold all questions for the end. So just, I just want to encourage you to maybe grab a pencil and paper to jot any thoughts you might have as the presentation goes so that we can get to you, your questions at the end. So moving into our oversight work session, I will hand it over now to Chief Financial Officer Jolynn Bergy to begin the staff presentation. Jolynn, go ahead.
Good afternoon, directors, thank you, Director Rankin. So this is a little unusual, we're doing this remotely. I am going to ask all of DOT staff, DOT's managers who were on to go ahead and turn their cameras on as I introduce them. They will introduce themselves, actually, I'll call their names, they will introduce themselves. So go ahead and turn your cameras on, DOT's management staff. And just as a reminder, the agenda for an oversight work session does follow a strict outline in Policy 1010. So that's how we go ahead and put this together. All right, Leah, can you take the PowerPoint down? There we go. All right. Let me get my, so first up, Carlos.
Hi, Carlos Del Valle, I'm the Executive Director of Technology Services, been with the district for about a little bit over a year.
Thank you. Judy?
Hi, I'm Judy Jaeger, Director of Information Systems and Business Intelligence. I've been with Seattle Schools for 13 years and I oversee all of the data systems.
Judy, Anna?
Hi, I'm Anna Cruz, I manage the Business Intelligence Atlas Data Warehouse Team. We do data and I've been with the district for almost six years.
Thank you. Alexis?
Hi, I'm Alexis G. Day Marshall and I'm the Business Systems Manager. I manage the team for our operating system, which is SAP. I've been with the district for about four and a half years.
William? You're on mute, William?
I would be the one, right?
Yeah.
So I'm William Drake, I'm the manager for Student Systems. Our team supports the school-based applications, you're probably familiar with Power School. We provide a lot of the roster data for dozens of other classroom-based systems and we customize and build from scratch a lot of the operational systems like truancy and transportation and a variety of other systems. I've been with the district about six years now, coming up on, in a week or two.
Thanks, William. Nancy?
Hi, I'm Nancy Peterson, I'm the Director of the Technology Infrastructure and I've been here about 11 years.
Thank you. April?
Hi, I'm April Mardok, I'm the Cyber Security and Operations Manager. My team deals with both digital forensics and cybersecurity issues as well as we manage the network, the data center, telecommunications, phones, all of that kind of basic nuts and bolts. And I've been with the district off and on since 1999.
Thank you, April. Colleen?
Hi, my name is Colleen Haverson and I manage the Technology Support Services Team. And our technicians and system engineers ensure that the technology used by our students, teachers and staff is supported. And I've been here about six years now. Thanks.
It's Colleen David. David Hawley, you're on mute.
Thank you, and my camera's coming on?
Oh, yeah, I don't know, yes, here we go.
So I am David Hawley, I'm the manager of the tech line. I have five people that work for me that are all fantastic. If any of you have called in and talked to them, you will be overjoyed, I hope. And, and I've been with the district for about 12 years and I love it here, I love all my coworkers. And I actually enjoy coming into work, which is why I'm here right now, that's actually not why. But, and I also want to say, and these, these people work for Colleen, but the technical support specialists that have been helping out with the student tech line and have been doing that, and a special shout to Ryan Ye, who have done an amazing job and have put in so much work and so much time and I just want to make sure that they're recognized too. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Ayesha?
Hi, everyone, my name is Ayesha Bhamani, I'm the new Digital Equity Program Manager for SPS, about a month now, but this is my third year with SPS and I'm really excited to join the DOT's team.
Thank you. And wrapping up with Tim. No, not wrapping up, we have one more after Tim. Tim?
Hi, I'm Tim McTeall, I'm the Senior Admin for DOTs and I handle all the administrative stuff. It'll be a year tomorrow, I'll be with SPS, so it'll be a year.
Thanks, Tim. Rafael?
Hello, good afternoon, everyone, my name is Rafael Leguero. I am the Digital Learning Manager, managing a strong team of eight supporting all educators and schools with their digital learning needs.
And I just wanted to say, Rafael, you don't report directly to DOTs, but we work super closely with you and we consider you part of our management team so that we don't have silos between what CAI is doing and, and what we're doing in DOTs technically. So thank you for coming and joining us today. So with that, I will turn it over to Carlos, we will turn on our cameras when we're speaking, otherwise we'll turn them off now. And over to you, Carlos.
All right, slides up, can you guys hear me? Hi, good evening.
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, I'm gonna be walking you through the overview of the Department of Technology Services. What is, how are we composed and what kind of operations and tools and systems that we have in-house? These are items in the agenda for tonight. We will be talking a little bit about the department functions, what makes DOTs a professional organization as we explore the SWOT analysis, our accomplishments, the organization's composition, the internal processes, systems, budgets, and our vision of where we're going in the future. Slides? As we can see, the department's function is to provide a centralized IT, serving the districts and ensuring students and educators and staff have the appropriate access to technology and digital resources. As we can see, this range from a rate of system support and services described right here on this list, from business systems, data mining, student information systems, maintaining the network, telecommunications infrastructure, down to ensuring the safety of our students and integrity and reliable access of our digital resources through cybersecurity policies, governance, et cetera. Slide please. Again, our vision is to deliver the appropriate technology and access to resources, ensuring that we provide world-winning solutions that help advance the quality of our education and ready access to quality digital resources in our ecosystem. DOTs believes in, is our mission to ensure solutions we implement bring value to our ecosystem and provide the necessary tools for student success and the flourishing of enhancement solutions for the improved business processes that support Seattle Excellence Plan. So we take care of both, you know, the side of the academic and the business, we want to improve processes within both. Slide please. So how do we do it? Let's take a look at the SWOT analysis here. Take away points here, in my professional opinion, you know, being new to SPS and seeing how DOTs operate internally as a mature organization, I will say DOTs, it is a mature IT organization with the right processes and controls to deliver on these tasks. Yes, we have areas that need a little bit of improvement and yes, we need to concentrate in reaching those and improving those areas. Although I might say these team strengths are priceless, especially this past year, you know, it was evident that we have outstanding professionals. This department is composed of an exceptional, dedicated and experienced experts that are very proficiently operating collaboration across all the departments and understanding what it takes to deliver systems efficiently and safely for the students. Now, we have some weaknesses, we believe that there's room for improvement in some areas of weakness such as enhancing the professional development and putting in place a process that can help project interim prioritization. We've done a little bit of work on that and we're just trying to improve it. COVID, these are prices with an exponential increase in work for staff with minimal increase in capital. So we, there's a lot of sacrifice that went in there. As we tried to be more efficient, we have looked at improving processes such as the little project that we started last February, I believe. There was a process reengineering for software development lifecycle. And that allowed us to have very clarity and work together across departments and bring a little bit more improvement as improvements process-wise. We have the door for opportunities, I believe that we have a door for vast opportunities as we move forward for this past year. COVID forces to accelerate and implement a digital learning ecosystem, you know, the one-to-one. Now we got, we had to improve our networks, we have, we did a lot of lift and insurance, a lot of investment on what's had happened this past year. And we have improved, you know, way of doing business as well by going digital. With this technol, this is basically a baseline, with this technological baseline, we have an excellent opportunity to lead the way on using technology in the classroom to achieve district academic goals and beyond. Think of it as the classroom of the future. We can do this by bringing stakeholders and community together to better understand the needs and mature in our internal IT engineer processes with users' involvement and feedback. That way, everybody, stakeholders, students, community, they're all, they're all part of the development processes that we bring new solutions on play. Everybody understands the roadmap, everybody understands what tools are coming and what timelines. There's some hurdles describing the threats and risks. Still, I will say by normalizing our internal processes such as the project intake, improving communications across functional departments and the community and involving the stakeholders early and throughout the development cycle while ensuring the right governments and controls are in place, I believe we can realize solutions that will bring value to our district. There's a little bit of a change that will have to happen culturally. It's a must when we change, you know, directions, but you know, it has to happen as we move through this dynamic and digital way of doing business that we have entered. Slide please. So the accomplishments, you know, I take my hat to DOTs, you know, it's been incredible year, this past year. You guys can see we work on COVID responses, we do process reengineering while in COVID. And then we did address some of the systems, student systems, as we went into COVID, we needed to put the platforms that will support students, we needed to do rastering, we needed to do a lot of internal, you guys heard William talking, there was a lot of lift and a lot of from-scratch programming that had to be done to, to ensure student systems. As far as the COVID response, the implementation of this magnitude will take years of planning and development. So there is a, so there's a systematic approach to deliver the right solutions to the right problems efficiently and safely for students and staff. The team of very dedicated professionals have accomplished all of these and many other efforts. And I might say that they have sacrificed much of their own personal and family lives to ensure provide these services to the community. One of these professionals, many of these professionals are parents of students of this community themselves and their sacrifices are greatly appreciated. They're the ones that deserve the credit for this exceptional job. I mean, I literally, I noted in here, short of a miracle, a standard effort and performance throughout the year. Exceptional team, I will say. Slide please. So this is how we organize. This is a high level, we have Chief Jolynn Bergy, Berg, Bergy, sorry. On top, she's dual-headed, I'm right under her as the Senior Technical Advisor and the Executive Director of Technology for two directories, the Business Intelligence and the Enterprise Applications. Overall, it's about 126 members and let's move to the next slide where we can see that actually the bigger picture. And over here, I'm gonna pass it to, to both Judy and Nancy so they, they can speak to their areas. Go ahead, Judy.
Thank you, Carlos. We are the Information Systems and Business Intelligence Directorate. It's a little bit hard to read, but it's sort of the, the section that's off to the left. So that includes me at the top and then you'll see three distinct teams, platform managers. And so we've already been introduced to Anna, William and Alexis. And you'll see their teams there and their teams are comprised of a mix of analysts, architects and developers that help maintain, support and enhance all of our systems. And then off to the far left are the project managers. I've got a small grouping of project managers that work very, very closely with the platform teams to ensure successful delivery of projects. So with that overview, I will turn it over to Nancy.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Nancy Peterson and I have the Technology Infrastructure, which is on the right side of that page. Have a number of groups, some that you've already heard from. April Mardok has all of the infrastructure, the network and systems, the operations services, telecom, and also has folks in cybersecurity. And then next to that is Colleen Haverson, who has all of the technologists in the schools. These are the folks that help at the Stanford Center as well as at the schools. They are currently populating the resource centers that we have eight of across the district. They help both students and staff with their hardware and software. And a number of them are also helping out on the student tech line that David talked about early, earlier on. Both David and Colleen have worked together to provide the tech line support, phone support to our families and staff so that everyone can get the support that they need. For the tech lines, that has been a different kind of experience and for the tech leads as well during COVID, because we are also supporting families at home and staff own computers and internet at home. And so that's added a little bit of complexity and a lot of interesting things. So that's a lot of Colleen's group. She also has a client management team who is responsible for managing all of the software and browsers and operating systems, all the versions that are installed on all the district laptops. So that's a huge job that that group provides. And then she also oversees the project manager that does capital projects and gets the technology for those as well as the printing services group. And then in addition to those folks, I have a project manager who does capital projects for oversight of equipment, networks and that kind of installation. As well as I have a project manager, that's Eric Kinsel, and I also have Joanne Cobb, who's a project manager for the rest of our projects. And that has included, she managed the one-to-one computing project as we started adding student computers for the high schools last fall, last, the 2019 year. And then she also helped coordinate all of the distributions that we had for student laptops throughout COVID and into the fall. She just completed the web platform, managing that project with the web team that resides in the Communications Department as we moved my SPS to a new platform and she's also leading that project that will convert the main websites also to the new platform. And then I'll hand that back over to Carlos.
Thank you, Nancy. Slide please. So we strive to do our best, you know, to bring services and maintain the service at a high quality. So these are departmental goals and objectives that we have set for our major services. We started with the successful enterprise applications as we develop applications and we go through the development lifecycle. When we started implementing the software development lifecycle last year, it wasn't in place. We brought a contractor, we implemented the process, everybody got trained, we, across departments and we, it's paying off. I mean, we, we have a list of projects and, you know, we're doing fairly well, you know, 90.1% within scope and performance and cost. It's a good point. High level of security, we haven't had serial, serial data breaches, which is exceptional. We take this very seriously, make sure that, you know, run somewhere and any viruses that might take over our network, you know, open a hole in the network and then data breaches might happen, we, we are on top of it. April, our security manager, she's top cybersecurity professional that looks after these things. Tech support and systems operations, we used to have a survey on the last system that asked customers after they, they had the problems resolved, whether they thought about it. And then we had a pretty good response, 90%, positive responses in that survey. The system is changing, we're actually upgrading the customer support ticketing system and we are upgrading that survey. So a new survey question is coming online here pretty soon. Systems data and support, that's just how do we keep the systems running? We, I think it's a good percentage, 99.8%, you know, uptime. Student digital access, this is in reference to bringing computers, the one-to-one computers to, to members and anyone that, basically anything that one needs, you know, staff as well. I think we are, we're reaching a 98%, which is a good rate. And also during summer, during summer, as we were faced with COVID, there was a lot of confusion in communication and people, you know, couldn't understand why things were not being deployed or developed or brought forward. And then, you know, development takes process, so we, we realized that there's a lot of, there was a lot of communications across the community, the functional departments, so we started being more proficient at this area and ensuring that everybody got the necessary information through various means, you know, FAQ, LLC, the tech line, Scooby, for both, you know, educators, staff, community, to make sure they understand that what was coming, what is being implemented and how it's being implemented. And I think we, I will call it 100% because we went from zero to literally just doing this constantly. Slide please. Once again, the uptime, overall systems, this is the actual systems, each, the servers, I will say. We got a pretty good rate in 99.9, that's excellent. We bring it down a little bit, that's what is, you know, it's about 80%, I mean, 80.80 down is because we bring the systems down for maintenance and updates of their software. So it's just a little bit, but overall it's a good rate. The overall win and network, this is just the networks, swell, good rating. When it comes to the tech line, we have the first resolutions service now as our system. And past year, we've been about 61% this year. I will say it's okay compared to past year, it's better if it's, the higher that is, the better. The same with the call abandonment during summer, we couldn't, you know, there was a lot of calls, we got inundated with calls because of the situation, we got put, put in there. People receiving devices, hotspots, not knowing how to use the hotspot or not knowing how to use the software. So the tickets, the tickets went, went, went pretty high up, I will say. But, so we couldn't tell, you know, the abandonment rate of the calls. I will say that it's probably about, last year it was probably about 6.8%, 6.9, doesn't seem as bad. Slide please. When it comes to funding, we get, we get sourced from two sources, the general fund and the levies. On the tech service, and these items are here, we set it up within buckets, this is mainly operations, the general funds, information systems, business intelligence, that's mainly people, software, training, technology infrastructure, this bills that we have, like telephones, you know, operating, operations type of bills. We were very blessed this year with grants for buying hotspots, internet access and the digital equity grants as well, which allows to, to bring Aisha on board to take care of our digital equity issues across the community. And then there's the capital transfer tech support. There's there's a lot of bills that we pay with, with, with general funds because of operations. So there's a capital transfer that gets done between levy money to this and it's allowed by law. That allows to pay for operations in this bucket. Go, go next please. This was the levy of funds. And there's three buckets. This mainly addresses the areas that pretty much the directors, Judy's area, Nancy's area. Under the student learning support, we basically have, that's what we pay here for people, student devices, technical support, the TSSs, digital learning support, software, laptops, and stuff like that. District systems data is also people, it pays more from, from the business side of the house and financial systems, the SAP. The learning management systems, student information systems. You know, the licenses, the contracts, consultants that provide to do that. So even thinking about Microsoft Teams or Neo Gov. The Schoology, you know, those type of licenses, that type of systems falls in this bucket. Infrastructure and security, and this is just mainly the management of the data center, people, data center, the cybersecurity teams, the, the tools that they use. The student tech line falls in here. Servered licenses that we have in the data center. Software licenses as well from the data center and all their operations and equipment maintenance connectivity. Slide please. Now let me pass this to director, to our director of technology infrastructure, Nancy Peterson. She'll speak a bit about the benchmarking, the governance and the controls that we adhere to as a professional organization so we can develop things and get solutions to bring value to our organization. Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you, Carlos. So on this slide, the benchmarks that we have, you'll see quite a few asterisks. And that's mainly because this year COVID really changed everything for us, as you know. If we start at the top with the technology support specialists and the computer support specialists, those first two lines, those are under Colleen Halverson's organization. And the technical support specialists are the main folks that are out in the schools and at the resource centers. They are full-time employees who do support for both staff members and students. And are also doing the, the student tech line that is supporting families as well. So you'll see that we have 37 of those currently. The benchmark is 52, and so we're below that benchmark. The CSS is on the next line. We have 19. The benchmark would be 36. So we're below that as well. Now, the benchmark that we're using here is what was published by OSPI. And OSPI in general looks at the districts across the state to be able to come up with some reasonable benchmarks for us to compare to. However, very few of the districts across the state have had one-to-one computing at all levels. All of the districts now are working to get one-to-one computing at all levels of students. But that is new this year for others as well as, as for us. And so these benchmarks may not be accurate for what we really need for our one-to-one computing now with students. That's something that all of the districts are experiencing now. And we will be working with the districts to try and come up with some, some better benchmarking, even when we're back in the schools. I know I've had folks say, well, won't we take the laptops back from students when we're done with our school closures? And we really do not expect to. That's kind of one of those things that once the genie's out of the bottle, that's pretty hard to put it back in. We also have a number of teachers, bless the teachers for coming up with all new curriculum and managing to get all of their lessons plans into remote learning to figure out how to use the new technology to help their students using technology. They've just done a huge lift. And once they get through this remote part, many of them are actually pretty excited about being able to use more of the computers in the class as well. And make better use of teams and the internet for all of their student learning. So this isn't something that will necessarily go away when we open schools. In fact, we hope it will be helpful in all of our, our classrooms as well. And so we will work with the other schools in the state and across the country to do new benchmarking. For the last three lines on this slide, you'll see the help desk staff. We have five currently. The old benchmark that we had was eight. Technology training staff, we had zero still. And the benchmark before was four, for a district of our size. And then the digital learning specialists, we currently have eight. And quite some time ago, the benchmark for our size would have been 16. These benchmarks are from the Council of Great City Schools as well as an organization that a few years ago did an audit of Seattle schools and our Department of Technology Services. Clearly, if we were not one-to-one organization then, computing has changed a lot. And not just being one-to-one, but also being remote, as I mentioned. That's brought up just a whole new range of support issues that we've needed to help our families and students and teachers through. So as we look at benchmarks going forward, we will want to compare to other similar districts. We'll look at other districts that have their own self-hosted student systems and business applications like our Power School and Schoology, or Power School anyway, and also the SAP applications. Some districts use, especially in the state of Washington, the smaller districts use a product called Skyward, which is managed out of the WISIPSE Consortium. And that is sort of a lighter weight set of tools that is very difficult for a district our size to be able to use effectively and efficiently. So we need to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples when we compare to benchmark with other districts. We'll also look at other districts of our size and similar demographics makeup. And we'll want to look at districts whose technology shops have comparable functions. Especially when we compare to other districts across the United States. There are quite a bit of differences between districts. And so it gets to be very interesting to compare functions and staffing levels. Other districts have more standardized applications across their districts. They, some of them have application support out in the departments for systems like SAP and all of the modules in SAP. Some of the departments will do their own support. And so that will not be in the technology departments. A lot of districts have business intelligence and compliance reporting like Judy's group covers. But that is also in a different department. And so we need to make sure that we're comparing similar functions to our, our DOTS. Our DOTS benchmarks. Next slide please. This is a slide that shows all of the policies, the board policies and superintendent procedures that we specifically focus on when we are looking at our Department of Technology work. It relates to the work that our infrastructure groups do when we're designing systems and internal controls. When we're reviewing vendor apps and software to onboard into the district. And Judy's groups also pay attention to these in creating the data and reporting and doing software development and support in those groups. So in general, we look at the network and internet use policies and actually provide much of that content. We manage the data and records privacy very closely. All of the 5,000 and 6,000 series policies pretty much are supported by the SAP system and that group. Because SAP is really how we implement many of those policies. The series, those two series are the personnel and management support areas. That includes financial systems, HR, payroll, marketing, everything else that's in SAP. So it really is up to us in technology to figure out how to implement systems that will comply with all of those policies and superintendent procedures. Next slide please. So in addition to those, we have other key internal and external controls that we need to comply with and to follow. This again, these apply to our software development and software selection and deployments. They relate to the contracts that we enter into. They guide our internet usage and how we structure our websites. One of the first ones that's talked about here is the accessibility consent decree. That has expired technically, but we are of course still under the same federal laws. Such as the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines and so forth. And we've worked very hard in this district. The web teams are very versed in internet accessibility and have done a lot of work on our platforms, our current ones and our new ones to make sure that those are accessible to all of our families and the public as well as internally. And we also have a full process for reviewing software requests that teachers and principals make and departments for bringing in software to the district that's going to be exposed to students and/or families in the public. And we review all of those for ADA accessibility compliance as well as for data privacy. So you'll also see here that we are, we need to comply with FERPA, of course, as well as with SIPA and COPPA as we're setting up our internet usage and our student policies and access. We are bound by Washington State laws for safeguarding student user and data privacy. This comes into effect particularly when we're reviewing vendor software and applications. We are very careful to review the kind of data that we share and we have comprehensive data sharing agreements and non-disclosure agreements that we've worked with legal to set up. And so we require all of those for any new vendor applications that we bring in or any new modules that we may adopt for our existing vendors. The, I will just make a note here that all of the schools in Washington or a number of the districts have banded together and come up with a statewide district or data sharing agreement that we use. And this allows us to work with vendors to say, if you sign this state data sharing agreement with us, then any district in the state of Washington can also honor that same thing without having every vendor sign a different agreement with every single school district. There is also a national version of this that we are working to as a state to come in line with. So then we'll be able to take advantage of a lot more software without so much review in many cases. And then finally, the internally, down at the bottom, the audit and review efforts that we have internally. Cybersecurity roadmap and controls, we're constantly looking at and refining and implementing. We have comprehensive disaster recovery plans and a roadmap and we continue to chip away at that. And then the SAP system is doing a full systems assessment and roadmap under Judy's work. So that takes care of my slides. And I'll turn it over now to Judy Jaeger to talk about the next slides.
Nancy, I think you, either you or Carlos may have one more with the outside service contracts.
I'm sorry, that might be mine as well.
No problem.
We kind of share these really.
You can do this together.
Yeah. So some of them are mine, some of them are Judy's or, or our teams rather. But these are all the larger contracts that we have. So you'll see many on these that have come before the board as we've renewed their subscriptions or our licensing for those. Enterprise Microsoft licensing, of course, is a very large one because it covers all of the software for every student and teacher and staff member across the district. And then there are a number of these others you will recognize. Schoology, Naviance is the college and career readiness platform. SAP has a lot of modules, many of which we take advantage of. You'll see in here the Verizon and Mobile Beacon and T-Mobile. Those are new ones that were not on these slides in previous work sessions because of course we just started adding in hotspots for those students who have no internet access at home. And then let's see, the other one that may not be real familiar is JIMP. That's an application that we use to manage all of the Apple devices. And since we now have iPads for all of our K through two students and teachers, that's become especially important this year. Judy, anything to add?
I think you covered it beautifully. Thank you, Nancy. Okay. Um, so as I stated before, with my directorate, information systems and business intelligence area, our primary function really is to ensure the care and feeding of our critical IT systems. We need them to be fairly easy to use, definitely reliable and modern and up to date. And that includes both system maintenance and also provision of data. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. So I'll be covering the next three slides. Key information systems on both the student information side of the house as well as business systems. And then I'll touch briefly also on some of the IT admin tools that the infrastructure team uses to keep things running smoothly. So I'll start by saying just at the highest level. One of our goals is to build systems that talk to each other. So we heard numerous times from the board over the years that we need to be adding systems that integrate easily. So no custom integrations whenever possible. And so we're looking to do that as we can. And also, we went through a period of time where there were some sort of pet systems and we ended up with sort of a huge, huge volume of applications. And so we're trying to be very strategic and over time look at some of those systems and identify where there could be duplication of functionality. And that sort of thing. And so over time, we're going to be looking to consolidate where possible. So again, that's not going to be able to happen overnight, but we definitely have our eye on that and we're making progress as we can. Let's see here. So for our key student information systems, you can see on the slide, we have many, many applications. And we also have lots of services and interfaces. The primary platform that you would be familiar with is definitely Power School for student data. And as you know, Power School stores and tracks all of the important student information that demographics, grades, attendance, behavior, things of that nature. And there's a number of complimentary applications and add-ons that use that source data and rely on it. One example of that, just to illustrate, is you've got Power Schools, you know, the system of record for student data. And that feeds the 504 module that's within Power School and also online registration. So that's just one example to share. In addition to the 70 extracts and integrations that feed downstream systems. We also have student data that's getting sent to homeroom. And there's a list of students. And there's a list of students, attendance behavior and other data points. So it's really important to keep the data in sync and accurate. So those integrations and interfaces really help enable that. I also wanted to highlight our Atlas Data Warehouse and Atlas Report Center. So the teams have done phenomenal work over the years in building a data warehouse. And it's unusual for K-12 to have such a data warehouse that we have, where we have the student data and then we also have staff data. And so we can do some interesting correlations there to have the data model all built, to do some comparisons. So great work on all of that. We also have a whole suite of reports that we've been building out. So a lot of really cool stuff to come from the Atlas team as well. Next slide, please. Okay, for our business information systems, again, you know, primary platform that you're familiar with is going to be SAP, which incorporates key business functions, so like HR, payroll, finance and procurement. And you can think of it in a way that it supports both kind of like the employee processes, like hiring, benefits administration, firing or retiring, that sort of thing. And then also some of our end-to-end business operations processes. So like procure to pay would be just one example of that. In addition to SAP, you can see that we have a wide variety of side systems and specialized tools. Of course, there are scenarios where SAP doesn't offer something that's really K-12 specific. And so, you know, like the substitute system frontline is just one example where we built an integration so we can, you know, manage our substitutes and make sure we assign them to the right teachers. So one thing that I'll share about SAP is the integration that's standard within the platform is both an advantage and a challenge. So it's advantageous because we don't have to build these expensive, error-prone interfaces. So there's an efficiency gain there as well. But it's also a challenge because, because the data is so tightly integrated between the different components, there are downstream impacts if there's like a data quality problem. So just one hypothetical example, like let's say you're entering a new hire in HR and then you have a typo and there's a mistake. That data is going to flow all the way down to payroll and you may end up with incorrect pay or some other issue. So again, just a hypothetical, just one example that shows the tight integration, that's both a benefit and can be a challenge, for sure. Next slide, please. So for this slide, this, you'll notice we don't have any application names called out. So we keep those fairly under wraps, like within dots. We don't want hackers or anybody nefarious knowing exactly what we're using and what tools we're using to do monitoring. But we use some of these internal tools to do recovery backup, to monitor performance of our network, to do certain data mining and forensics with cybersecurity. And then also our ticketing system, that one's not confidential. But when we have our users that have like an issue, they can create a ticket and then we have a process for tracking and assigning and closing out those tickets. So with that, I will turn it back over to Carlos.
Thank you, Judy. So where were we going, the next steps? Board policies to be reviewed. As you guys heard in a couple minutes past, when I gave my report to the, to the board, we have the information technology planning policy that was requested by the board, 6902, ready for introduction. So it's going to be coming your way here pretty soon. Students' records policy is actually one that needs to be, is planned to be reviewed. I believe it's about four years old. April, do you, could you span on this one?
We, it was recently updated, but only for a very minor piece of information, which was the way that we manage immunization records. It needs an overhaul. It really hasn't had an overhaul in six years.
Six years, that's what it was. Thank you. And then focus areas that we're concentrating, technology governance. This policy, we opened the door and it actually calls out for a technology master plan to be developed. We are actually engaging with ITAC internally to DOTS and starting to develop this product. And I believe, based on the schedule that I showed last meeting, it'll be ready for introduction to you guys by September next year. Also, the, we're working, Jelena Jeeb, right now, on the development of the BTA, BTA V levy funds. District hardware and software standardization, like Judy was saying, you know, there's a request. During summer, we heard it a lot from the communities, like, hey, there's, there's too many platforms. We need to standardize these platforms. We need to, like Judy was saying, there's, there's a lot of integration. Which tools, the duplication, what tools are duplicated, why have them? You know, why pay for those? Let's minimize those platforms. Let's concentrate them and really bring some efficiencies to the, to the environment. Enhance the digital experience by leveraging the community. Once again, you know, we learn a lot during summer by communicating with the community, with CBOs, with students, with educators, and really trying to understand what was the, the, the needs that they were required and how those translated into technology. We were, to ensure that we continue doing that work. Then the end-user, teacher and principals and that data information access, is what Anna was talking about, as far as the BI analysis of this data on the Alice. We're going to be putting some dashboards that we are working right now to complement the use of these data by educators. Improving the creation of all enterprise and academic applications and services. Once again, we, it's every process, it takes quite a bit of time to take a system from cradle to operations. You know, you got RSPs, you got a collection of requirements. You have prototyping, you have a development environment where you test the prototyping. Then you bring users as a pilot to ensure that they, they verify that what they had requested, that's what they're receiving and making familiar and the communications that go along with that. A quick example of that is Microsoft Teams for Education, which we are, I believe today, we roll out a pilot with a set of schools where we're going to be teaching, testing these tools that were requested over, over the summer. And also, there were some rostering, the integration piece, and so rostering, they have to happen between Power School and Teams. So trying to make the environment more efficient, more dynamic, would improve the business processes internally for us, DOTS, the business size, and for the educators, for the teachers to, to manage their classrooms a little bit better. Self-service support and tools, how I say, we, we upgrading the, the ticketing system. And also, have you guys seen, you have the tech resource centers out there and the family tech line, very important work. And then at ERP, the feasibility study for business systems, we have a, an RFP going out to, to request a feasibility study to see what is the best business systems we can, we can have in place, whether it is SAP or some other tool that will be to be defined on RFP and then move forward from that point. Emerging trends, you know, we're in the digital age. We, we, we need to figure out how to merge both the mortar and the digital classroom as we move forward. Digital equity, you guys met Ayesha Bohami. She, she will be reaching out. When it comes, when it comes to technology, and we saw this over the, the, the summer as we were doing one-to-ones and we were trying to raise all the issues about hotspots, people didn't have internet. Okay, now everybody has internet. Now we started school at the beginning in September and we started realizing through the tech checks, started realizing the technology is not, doesn't fix all the problems. And there's other problems beyond technology out there that we need to start understanding so we can find some solutions for it. Ayesha will be working in that area as the digital equity manager, ensuring that, okay, is technology missing in, in, in the community? Is there other issues that they're missing that we can bring forward and find solutions for it? The one-to-one student device. Well, now we bought everybody a computer. Now we have operations and maintenance for these devices. So there's a cycle, replenishing, refreshing cycle that we have to make sure that it's put in place. It is in place, just to continue to operate on this massive amount of computers that we have now. Internet access, a need. And then cloud services. We see that some of the efficiencies that we have internally to collapse platforms and systems and integrate a little bit better, the use of cloud services have seen an improvement in some of our business areas. Not all systems, they're, they're able to provide that capability in cloud services. There's some systems that we have to maintain within our data center that controls the, the, the management of the networks and the internet and, and resources. So it's a balance between both of them, but we'll, we'll continue to see where we can have some improvements in those areas. With that, I'll pass it back to Chief Bergy for closing statements.
Thank you, Carlos. I'll just add my thanks and recognition to the DOTS team and to Carlos. It's been, you know, they've done a great job this last year. Really just unprecedented times. Obviously, we've heard that several times with COVID, but just hundreds and hundreds of extra hours on nights and weekends trying to stand at the one-to-one and the resource centers and all of the outreach programs that they volunteered for. We had a lot of staff that would volunteer their nights and weekends to go out and do outreach programs with other agencies. So just a wonderful job by the management team of DOTS led by Carlos. So thank you. With that, Director Rankin, we're ready for questions.
Okay, thank you. That was a ton of information. But thank you all so much. And it was great to see your, your faces. And well, here, I'll show you my face. Great to see your faces for just a moment. I wish that we were meeting, you know, actually face-to-face, but appreciate having the opportunity just to see all the people doing all this great work. So I will now move on to questions. I'll start at the top of the alphabet with Director DeWolfe. Do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Yes, thank you so much, Director Rankin. And I just want to underscore the gratitude that Chief Bergy was expressing and expressed that from myself as well. Just thank you so much for Technology Services, DOTS, for really stepping up in our time of need, particularly over the last 10 months as we're dealing with COVID and remote learning. So I just thank you all for the work you've done to support students and the work. I wanted to just, a couple of questions I had. Can you clarify, I heard the timeline for the technology plan. You said next September. Is that September 2022?
That, it is this year, September.
Okay. Thank you. I think, you know, while I think that's better than what I thought I heard you say, which was September 2022, I still think, I feel like we've been talking about this technology plan for a long time. And so I'm really concerned about the timing of that, particularly as we're, as we're talking about the levy, BTA, and how much of this technology plan conversation actually would have benefited us right now. And so I just, just want to name that, I think, thank you for your service. I recognize that you're, you're doing a ton of work and trying to get this out to us by September 2021, but I just do not think that that is the right timing, just given our BTA levy conversations that we're having. The other thing, can you clarify, you were, is Microsoft Teams for Education just now being rolled out and piloted, so January 2021?
Nancy, Nancy, can you bring us on that in this one?
Yes, yes. Director DeWolfe, Teams for Education is now being rolled out in a pilot right now. We waited till now because the Teams for Education platform did not have breakout rooms, which our teachers told us were critical. And so we stayed with the regular Teams platform that we've had all along, that we have in the business side as well, and waited until that functionality was added before we introduced Teams for Education.
Thank you, thank you. Very helpful. And then my just final question here is around, as we are in the middle of our conversations around BTA V, do you have any suggestions or recommendations for important priorities that we should be aware of as the board, as we are planning for this levy?
So I think one of the big changes for us, Director DeWolfe, is really the movement to one-to-one and how are we going to support that going, going forward? That's our biggest concern right now. Carlos, are there others that you'd like to add?
I think that's, Nancy, will you grab us through this one? I know you had some ideas. Do you want to bring forward?
Well, I think Jelena's right. The, the one-to-one computing is a huge part of what we need to do going forward. You know, we scrambled for, to get enough laptops out to our students, our teach, our instructional assistants, our substitutes. And we ended up needing to reuse a lot of equipment. We will need to replenish, in fact, all of the laptops that we have purchased because that will be four years out is the rotation that we're trying to get to for that cycle of replacement. And so that is it within the BTA V timeframe. So we will need to really prepare carefully to make sure that we can replenish those. I think another thing we need to look out for is cybersecurity. That is huge anyway. It is even more important with one-to-one computing for our students. But everyone is aware of all of the ransomware attacks and very large cyber, or cyber attacks out there. We have two people working in cybersecurity currently. They do an amazing job. We use an outside firm to help us so that our folks can get some sleep nights. And, and so they watch for alerts and, and alert us if they see any concerns. And so, but, but information security is one of those things that you can do a huge amount of prevention and all it takes is one. And so we're constantly on the alert. We will need to be vigilant on that for the next many years.
Thank you so much for those. I appreciate you.
Thanks.
Director DeWolfe, did you have anything else?
Sorry, no, I'm all good. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thank you. President Hampson.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. So I think my primary question is, just in the interest of time, I'll keep it to one. You showed kind of the benchmarking in terms of staffing. I'm interested in knowing what the monetary investment expectation would be if we were to hit benchmarks? Are we looking to kind of ramp up to that over some period of time? How do we advocate for that in terms of student cost? And, or, you know, the, in terms of how we talk to the state about the, the cost per student, knowing that we are going to need to have a, continue to have this, this digital learning option in, for the foreseeable future? And also, what's the breakdown? It looked to me like the, we're about two-thirds in terms of student teacher support and a third in terms of overall, overall operational systems in DOTS. I don't know if that's the, the right breakdown, but I'm, I'm interested in that, kind of the bigger staffing picture.
Thank you, President Hampson. I think that the overall contemplation of the funding formula by the legislature in certain components like tech is still 20 years behind. And the governor's budget did do a little bit. They, they put some more money in for some technology pieces, but there's just, they just are so far behind. they just are so far behind that I don't think that they're going to catch up realistically. I think it'll fall to us wanting to carefully consider that as part of our levy ask. That's how we're funding it, that's how other districts are funding their technology through technology levies. We roll ours into capital, but most districts run a separate tech levy. That is how the majority of technology staffing costs are covered right now. And so that's part of our consideration and it'll be part of what we bring forward as far as the BTA V ask.
And do you have um in mind, have you all as a team planned out the ramp up or the stair step up um to to try to get to a fuller service model as either a cost per student or in total dollar amounts, you know, over a period of time? If we were to be successful in gaining that through our levy dollars?
Yeah, that's part of what we're working on as far as what is that additional staffing that we need to move to? So when we went to one-to-one early on, you know, we had conversations with the board about we are going to need some more staffing when you put the
Right.
computers out there. And we've started that work, um we've started increasing staffing. So we'll continue, we'll bring that forward as part of our BTA V request. And
Okay.
it'll be defined as far as um a total dollar increase in the overall staffing and what those positions might look like.
And then um is that, is it about right that it's about two-thirds student and teaching staff? And the rest is operational or is that, am I incorrect?
Are you dividing it up kind of between Judy and Nancy on the org chart?
Kind of, yeah, that's where I was.
I think
That's kind of what I was using, yeah.
Yeah, uh I think so, I'll let them answer if that's not correct. Carlos, do you think that that's probably about right?
I would say so, yeah, I mean.
And as we grow, would that go to more like three-quarters to to one-quarter, do you think, or?
Actually, I think the increases are gonna be needed across technology.
Okay, so it would stay the same proportionally?
Yes, because as we add more tools, the support for that grows. I know Judy's teams have been supporting families on Schoology as well as students and teachers. I think the digital learning specialists will need to add there too because we've added so much technology and for all of our teachers and subs as well. And so, yeah, I think it's gonna be across the board.
Okay, all right. Um I will, that's good for me, thank you so much for all of that and I'll pass it along to the next director. Oh, I'm sorry, was somebody else gonna say something, Judy, were you gonna say something?
Oh, I was just agreeing with Nancy and just saying thank you. Um you know, Schoology and also CSO and then other platforms and and tools being used. And I just echo um the sentiment that we just need to look carefully at support, support models and staffing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Uh Director Harris, do we have you?
You have had me since uh 4:37, thank you.
Okay, great, I mean, I I figured as much, but I just thought I would double check before I, you know, called into
No problem.
So
First of all, uh beyond props to the DOT staff. I think each and every one of you could be working for Big Tech for probably two or three times. The salaries that we pay you and you're here for heart and soul and for our students and it's recognized and appreciated beyond. Uh I have several questions and I don't expect answers this evening, but if someone could go back and look at the minutes or the um recording and perhaps do a um Friday memo so we're all on the same page? And I'll just start reading them off and uh then I'll stand down. One, um did the ITAC committee review your board's slide deck and assist you in your presentation? Two, you talked about a survey that you had 90% um return and satisfaction. I don't know what the numerator is on that, how many folks and who are those folks that we surveyed? And we're getting ready to do another survey, uh who are we going to survey? And were there any um other additional stakeholders that we want to focus on? Three, this one's really clear to my heart. I I love you all very much, but I don't need to know your middle name and your middle initial. And it's my understanding we can do first name, dot, last name at SeattleSchools.org. And it's my extreme belief that that would assist in transparency. Um I think I'm on four or five. Digital equity grants, when does that expire? I'm beyond thrilled to see it, but what is the sustainability of that uh position? Um the tech plan, I will echo the comments of my colleague DeWolfe that uh the tech plan perhaps should be moved up higher on the priority list because of BEX V and with a reminder and a comment that the tech plan was never approved by the board. It just became part of the urban legend and referred to. And I and a number of colleagues have had issues with that. That's not policy. Uh appreciate very much the benchmark conversation and appreciate that in the middle of COVID, benchmarking districts of same size and demographics throughout the country was probably um impossible. But but I do look forward to seeing such an update. I am beyond curious about the O S T I direction here. Are we reading that, are we following, how did we get there from here? Um I I heard from slide 14 about personnel and SAP. I want to know again, do we have an HR docketing system for employee issues? This is an issue that has festered, that the board several years ago, of which I was one, advocated strongly for a docketing system so we don't find ourselves in the personnel trou- trouble that we do find ourselves in. And I I have not heard an update from the time that we had a work session where we were told that the $1.3 million that were allocated were not spent on a docketing system. And I truly want an explanation for that and how uh HR and DOT is working together for that. Also heard Atlas Data Systems reference for HR and does that hold into a docketing system? Um I also am very concerned about the fact that we have so many uh students falling behind and whether or not we will be able to lift up some kind of an online learning platform for K through 12 for backfilling some of the things that our extraordinary teachers have not been able to teach given COVID-19 and the worldwide pandemic. And if we do such an academy for catch-up, how are we going to um select said a- academy so that it is not part of the corporate deformed educational uh revolving door? There there are a great many folks that would very much like to de-minimize the role of our extraordinary teachers. And I I am very concerned because I think that that is ramping up and coming our way in a very big fashion. Last is a personal comment. In the past, I have asked whether or not we need a standalone CIO as opposed to tasking CFO Burgi with two completely separate, huge bandwidth departments. And I understand from CFO Burgi that that comment or question was met with fear from DOT and or that I thought that somehow y'all weren't doing your job and nothing could be further from the truth. I would like to see and I want to know whether or not we have put out a um job description for a separate standalone CIO chief. And again, I'm happy to wait until a Friday memo as long as you hit all these lovely points. And and I think DOT are heroes without question and I thank you so very much. Pass to the next director.
All right, thank you, Director Harris. Director Hersi, you are up.
Yeah, thanks, can you all hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. Uh my questions really did focus squarely um on how we can incorporate some of our ongoing technology needs into the um next levy, which Director DeWolfe already brought up. I guess my other, only other question is, um and forgive me if I missed this at one part in this very thorough presentation. Uh as we are thinking about, you know, continuing our one-to-one allocation of devices, are we, what work is DOTS doing with potentially curriculum and instruction around courses on digital citizenship? Um and where do we see the work uh of the department in alignment with that? Because as we um, you know, continue one-to-one devices, I can already hear the complaints about screen time going up very, very quickly. And uh I think that we're going to miss an opportunity if we are not actively engaging in developing a digital citizenship curriculum uh that's required as we continue to build out our technology offerings as a district.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Um whenever the word curriculum is brought up, obviously, we're going to partner with CAI. They're going to lead through the curriculum piece. We will support them as far as um their curriculum plans. So I believe that Rafael is still on and has heard your comment um and and has made a note about about that request.
Yeah, I think if we're going to ask, especially in our next levy for support with technology, we need to just, you know, make sure that we have our bases covered, that we're not just asking for technology on our end, but we are also uh develop a, developing a plan to ensure that kids are safe online, not only uh with one another, but as they access, you know, the entire world at their fingertips. Um so yeah, just would really love to see this plan come through in tandem. I I know that we might not necessarily have been thinking about this uh in a robust way as of yet, but just want to make my request for that clear.
Yeah, I'll just make one other note. Um one of the things when you said that kind of triggered for me is one of the ideas that we'll have, you know, we have a budget work session tomorrow night, so all of this kind of is weighing on my mind about the levy and the budget and everything as we've been working on that, is my wonder is, is maybe we need to ask for a legislative change to expand the uses so that we can buy the curriculum out of levy dollars? Um and is that something that we want to think about, uh that ask? Because I don't know of another way that's gonna get, that's gonna get delivered to us unless we identify a funding source for it. And, you know, it it always is a pressure, right?
Yeah, I totally agree, I actually like that idea a lot. And, you know, whenever we can, you know, I think the legislature will be pretty amenable to uh helping us free up dollars as long as we're not asking them for it. And that's all I got, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Director Hersi. Uh Director Rivera Smith.
Evening, thank you. Um I'll follow up really fast just um because Director Hersi's last point there made me think of something. Um and that's because regarding just digital citizenship and safety. And I already did speak, I know it's come up before and I spoke to Chief Burgi earlier about um just our safety as far as our student, our devices with students right now. Parents don't have controls over, they don't have parent controls available to them, so students can access sites that some parents would rather them not. And I know that's something that is on um on the agenda for um your department. I understand, Chief Burgi, that you guys are looking into that and trying to figure out a solution there. So thank you for that, I just wanted to um get that on the record for our parents listening who might be concerned because it has been a concern raised in community, um that inability to sort of keep their students away from sites that are distracting and or dangerous. Um so I appreciate that it is something we are exploring, um a solution to that and some sort of ability for parents to protect their students with our devices. But my questions, my first one is actually an observation and and this is actually, this goes for not just this department, but all departments as we make these presentations, is be really sensitive acronym use because there's a whole lot of acronyms in this slides presentation. And I know these make sense to you guys, but for um directors and just general public, we know sometimes we don't know what these acronyms all are. Um so anyways, just 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 an overall comment there. Um I'm wondering, I'm, because I know this and I'm wondering if maybe this might be a CAI responsibility versus a DOT one, but um how much are we using, you know, an equity lens as we, as we choose, um you know, our learning management systems, our platforms, all those things like that? I know this has come up too in conversations, I think in committee. But one I, I don't, I didn't see much of that in this, I know we have our new digital equity. I don't know the official name, director, I guess, um and I really appreciate that. And I'm looking forward to seeing more of how we use that equity lens in in this department because, you know, that is really, and that's part of, just connects then also to, you know, zero, three, zero, trying to find ways in this where that was being used as we have selected our platforms and our, you know, all of our systems that we're using because there's so many. Um and I know it gets a little gray because these are internal kind of systems, a lot of things are business side. But these are still our values and we want to make sure that we're being consistent with our with our um evaluation and selection of, um, you know, things we're spending our time and money on, so. Is that something that's more CAI or DOTs? I again, I wanted to, you know, I I'm trying to get sort of clarity there.
Um yes, I think that the the tool itself and is it equitable would maybe be more of a CAI in the lead on that. We would come back around with the ADA and what we call the VPAT, so making sure it's ADA accessible and the student privacy piece is the piece that DOTS would make sure that they analyze once um something is selected.
Yeah, because I saw, I saw that in the, you have the process for evaluating software requests directly from schools and teachers, so. And in that, I didn't see anything about evaluating them based on, you know, um racial equity lens. It was, you got the the ADA kind of look at at that and everything else. But I want to just make sure that we, that is something that we are also doing because teachers want to do all sorts of things and that's great. And as you evaluate them, I'm just hopeful that we are using that lens to make sure that these are, you know, not not harming students in some way that, you know, is not obvious. Um my question regarding, I have things here on the slides. Uh I think we're closing on time here, but I see you guys in your department as a whole, you have upwards of like at least nine vacancies. Is that typical or should we be worried about that? Is it something that we're looking to fill?
Um Carlos and Nancy and Judy, I I mean, I think that we typically do have some vacancies with that number of staff at at all times. I guess I would let them respond.
So uh for the vacancies that I have, I know that we have filled some of those and we've also made decisions um to kind of repurpose some of those as we've um needed to change our focus. And so I I think we're nearly um filled on our vacancies.
Okay, yeah, the org chart, just the one you, in this, in the presentation has, there's, I believe, nine vacancies in there and I wasn't sure if that's something we should be worried about. Um um otherwise, I think I'm good. I had a question about the department goals and objectives, just as far as student digital access. Um clearly, the target is 100%, um our performance is 98%, which sounds really good. But I'm wondering, I guess, you know, we still hear about students having problems and trouble accessing, you know, their classrooms and and the the programs. I'm wondering, is 100% even possible? Because y'all, clearly, a lot of the access, access, sorry, a lot of access is more, you know, sometimes a connection. But I want to know if that's how we're, how are we judging digital access? Is it based on our making it available or their actual ability to connect?
Well.
Go ahead.
Uh yeah, we 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 actually have a look at both attendance and uh engagement and then there's data that would be pulling from the uh from the Atlas. Anna, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yes, we are pulling um usage data from the main like student systems that they're using. So we have that data available. I believe some of that has been um sent to the to the board. Uh we are hovering high 90s. Um I just want to bring something up that on a typical kind of day, pre-COVID, our attendance rate pre-COVID, our attendance rate is about ninety-five percent. Uh so five percent of students are typically absent on any given day. Um so with the move to online learning, we've actually bumped that up a couple of percentage points. Now we're about, you know, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent is what we're seeing. I'm not sure it's realistic from the data perspective that we would get to a hundred. There's always exceptions.
I understand. And um and yeah, and I'm wondering, again, like, so we're we're basing it on our our making it available, but of course, sometimes it sounds like a an an access is judged on they checked in uh somehow, and and I mean, I don't know, I I'm just trying, because you are equating that to their being in person, and which I think is is a good comparison. At the same time, when they're in person, they're usually there for like, you know, the school day. Whereas if someone checks in for just a minute, we're calling that access when really, you know, that's very minimal and not really speaking to the, you know, our students getting, you know, the full benefit of a school day or or uh learning. So um I know it's hard to parse down, um but I just was wanted to raise that. But yeah, um that was all of um my questions, I think. Thank you so much for the information presentation, and I will pass to the next director.
All right. That is me. Um I have a couple of quick things that I'm happy to get the answers to um at another time, and some overlaps with what directors have already said, and I see that at six o'clock, so I want to quickly get through and hand over to Director DeWolf. But um I just quickly, the tech support specialists that were listed that are full-time, is that they're, I know that there are some um staff member, SCA staff members that are designated as like a tech lead in their building, but they have another role in the building. So the tech support specialist, is that a full-time person that all that they're doing for the building is technology? Or is there something else? Um what's the overlap there or what's the title?
Yes, Nancy?
The technology support specialist is uh in technology services, and they do support the buildings, the students and staff for their technology needs. The um educational technologists are actual teachers in the buildings who are paid a stipend to help other teachers in their building with um instructional suggestions and help. They are not to do technology support, although many of them are are quite first, but they're more to help teachers in the instructional standpoint. Our TSSs are full-time in DOTS, and then the CSSs that are on that same chart are hourly employees that we fill in.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Um and then overlapping with uh I think Director DeWolf and Director Hersi in terms of the levy, um I am also really interested in the conversation about, um you know, what the ask is for technology and how, what the interaction is with CAI, because um, you know, I obviously, we had to move to one-to-one devices very quickly for the current remote um situation, and I imagine that remote learning in some form, distance learning in some form will be with us for, I mean, hope hopefully in some form may be made available to students in perpetuity. Um but I am wondering if uh how we can have the conversation about, you know, that refresh that happens in four years. Do we, do we want to continue to be a one-to-one one hundred percent of the time for all, you know, everybody? Or is there, um where's the opportunity to have a conversation about what role we want technology to play in the classroom? Um I I really want to involve educators and families in that, and some of that has to do with screen time and and um uh uh digital citizenship that Director Hersi was talking about, but I'm also interested in um making sure that educators are part of that conversation so that we have uh technology that meets education needs as opposed to technology becoming available and driving, driving education, if that makes sense. Um so I'm definitely interested in continuing on in that, that type of conversation for um just what what kind of education do we want and what kind of usage do we want in the classrooms? Um and uh and then actually related to what Director Rivera Smith asked about the software review, you know, I also kind of perked up at the software review for ADA compliance and data security and that type of thing, but when there's a request uh that comes from an educator for certain software, wh- uh what's the review process, and this actually probably isn't for DOTS, but what's the review process for the um for equity, for the educational appropriateness even of the app, like if we, as a district, think it, you know, it meets our values and the needs and uh and et cetera. So I'm interested in in that, what the review is on that end. Um really excited about the digital equity manager. I think um as I think Carlos noted, uh you know, what seems like a technical, tech technological access issue, there might be other things going on. And so I'm just really appreciate that we're recognizing that need and how somebody who is um kind of tasked with figuring out what's keeping, what is keeping this student from um being able to access uh technology and and how can we help them? Um and then the last thing is I would also be interested in the HR and DOTS relationship in terms of um, you know, we're really, we're really right on tracking uh student behavior and um um adult behavior and not as much. So it would be, I think, uh worth looking into that relationship between DOTS and HR. So that is um kind of all of my questions, and really appreciate um the hard work and the incredible body of work, just the list of different softwares and programs that are going on. Um and and how much, how furiously, I know you must all be working at this time, um is appreciated and necessary now more than ever. And um so thank you for the presentation and really excited to hear about Teams for Education rolling out starting today. Um I know it won't, you know, magically solve everyone's problems, but um the classroom management tools and such for teachers, I think, were going to be huge. So thank you so much for that. And so at six oh six, I will conclude our oversight work session and hand it over to our Operations Committee Chair Director DeWolf to chair our Operations Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Um would directors like just about four minutes for just kind of stretch bio break to just get themselves situated before this next conversation?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay, cool. I will, um I will see you at six ten. We'll just take a really brief stretch bio break. Thank you. Next year's student assignment transition plan. All directors have been invited to participate in the discussion, but when we reach the time to vote, the voting directors today will be the members of the Operations Committee, consistent with Board Policy twelve forty. We had, uh last time I think we had this was in December of twenty nineteen, when the Executive Committee took up the TAF partnership. And just one note, Director Mac is unable to attend tonight's meeting and has requested that Director Hersi serve as the voting, as the voting member in her place. So I know we are waiting for the presentation to show up on the screen, Ms Wilson Jones.
Um Director DeWolf, can I ask all um people who may be looking at tonight's materials on the website to go ahead and refresh your browsers? We did have one um document that was attached to the bar, and it was just, it was the wrong document, so I apologize for that. But we have got the correct one there now, and um Ashley might, I don't know if she'll be um speaking to it, but she could um explain the the update to you all.
Okay, cool. And it looks like uh Davies' computer is over uh do, has the presentation up on the screen, so with that, uh do our directors Rankin or Harris here?
Director Harris is here, I think.
I am here. Sorry, I didn't know you called roll. Sorry, I'm here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, cool. All the directors are here. So I will now hand it over to Director of Enrollment Planning, Ashley Davies, to begin the presentation on today's action items. We will have an opportunity for discussion, and then we'll move to the vote. So I'll turn it over to you, Ashley. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Um and just want to make sure that everyone can see the screen, um the presentation large. Yes, people can see.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Excellent, excellent. Um great. So thank you again. Um my name is Ashley Davies. I'm the Director of Enrollment Planning here at Seattle Public Schools. Um and today I'm here to talk about two board action reports. Um we are going to spend the majority of our time today talking about um southeast boundary um changes for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um over our ninety minutes, I anticipate that this discussion will probably need seventy of those ninety. Um and then we'll spend some time talking about the student assignment transition plan changes for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um and there's just um a small amount of changes. Um so again, want to make sure we have enough time for discussion on this topic. And so I have um a presentation just for us to go over some information and background. Um this is described within um the board action report. Um it also highlights the um different um engagements that we've had, um share some data as it relates to our equity considerations. Um and then I will transition from the um presentation to show uh the maps, um so that we can take a look at that and discuss the two options that we're presenting today. And so I want to be clear that um after I do go through some of the introductory materials, uh the process, um we have two scenarios for consideration um this evening. And uh we are asking uh the board to um choose one of those scenarios to move forward um for introduction um next Wednesday, um the thirteenth. So um
I'm sorry, I have a quickie question just to clarify. Um sorry to interrupt. Only the Operations Committee is voting tonight, correct? I want to make that clear in case I just want to know.
Correct, that is correct.
Gotcha. Great. You want to make sure I shouldn't be preparing to vote. I have an opinion, but I, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yes, yes, we definitely want to hear all opinions for sure. Thank you.
Great. Um so the the first is just identifying the problem and and talking a little bit about the data, and so um as we've talked about over the course of the, at this point, it's been several years, talked about the overcrowding. Um at Mercer Middle School has almost uh twelve hundred students, um and the current conditions are inequitable um for learning for students. And so there will be a replacement for Mercer that is scheduled to open in September twenty twenty-five. That building, though, only has a capacity for a thousand students, and that's consistent with our ed specs for a middle school. Um that has been a common question that we've got from families as we've talked through um some of the data, and some of the issue is why can't we build Mercer over a thousand seats? Um and so that is not consistent with, again, our our ed spec or um a learning environment that allows for um proper relationship um and administrative oversight, so. Um and uh before twenty twenty-five, uh Mercer will go to Original Van Asselt um for two years, beginning in twenty twenty-three, which will be two years from the fall. And that temporary site really has no flex space. Um so that a thousand seats on that campus is really um all that there is. So it's it's super important that we um not only right-size Mercer, but that we start that process immediately so that um we aren't in a bind um once we get to Original Van Asselt in the temporary space. Um and then just also highlighting that um several years ago, back in twenty thirteen, there was a boundary change approved for Mercer to provide relief. Um acknowledging that Mercer was already overcrowded. As I mentioned, it's been overcrowded for years. Once we transitioned um to the uh new student assignment plan, um which went to neighborhood um schools, uh Mercer quick, most immediately came overcrowded. And then so below, just highlight some of the um capacity and enrollment data. Um Mercer's current right-size capacity is about eight hundred. Um Aki's is about eight, um seventy in Washington, right around nine hundred. Um and so Aki and um Washington both um border Mercer and have space for more students. Um Aki is also um scheduled for um a remodel as well. And so I believe that is scheduled for completion in 2027. And that building would also be consistent with 1,000 student ed spec. Next is just highlighting both the capital and enrollment solutions that we look at as we talk about reducing overcrowding. You know, boundary changes, we understand are difficult. They involve a lot of change for families. And so, you know, before we get to that point, we look at our other options, especially if there are other solutions that we can take on instead of having to change those boundaries. And so we've exhausted all of our capital planning options, which are on the left side. And then we've looked at other enrollment options that aren't quite as impactful from an enrollment change perspective. That also includes the emergency cap on enrollment that we did with the school board in June, essentially stating that no new students to the Mercer attendance area would be enrolled at Mercer. And so that was something new that we've done. It's definitely not a long-term solution or something we would want to do consistently. And so, you know, after we've assessed all of our options and heard feedback, we're moving to a boundary change recommendation. And so typically, as I highlight the process that we've used here in a little bit of, you know, what we've done in the past, and, you know, so typically we like, we take this process on over the course of a longer timeline. You know, we would have started this work last spring, but given school closures with the pandemic, we took a pause on that so that we could think about how we would move forward with engagement. But again, given the timing and the real urgent need to make a change, resume that conversation and put together, basically, you know, a virtual engagement strategy. And so in October of this year is when we first shared the issue and began collecting feedback. So information was sent to all families in grades K through 8. So all the elementary schools that are within the Mercer attendance area and then all the current Mercer middle school students. And then we translated a video that talked about the issue into our top languages that are offered in that area. And then as of today, we actually have over 250 Let's Talk responses. November, December, continued to collect feedback and develop proposals. We attended a total of 10 keep school and community-based meetings to share information and collect feedback. My team gave presentations such as this presentation that I'm giving today. Talked with families about the issue, about the ways we look at solving the issue. And then, you know, families gave us different solutions that they've come up with, which I'll hide in a little bit, as well as just talked about some of their concerns that they wanted us to consider as we move forward. And then we created potential solutions and we shared those right before the break with families. And so here we are, the Operations Committee of the whole. And then we will have school board introduction and approval of changes, that should be 2021 there. But as I mentioned, next Wednesday, we'll bring forward one scenario and then on the 27th, the board will make a vote. And so the next few slides, I'm just going to give a little bit more background information and share what we've heard so far as, and then talk about the scenarios. So one thing to just kind of ground everyone in understanding what we're talking about. In front of you is the map of the southeast region. That includes both Washington, Mercer and Aki. And so Mercer has six elementaries that feed into it. And those elementaries are larger than the six elementaries that feed into Aki. And so the issue of overcrowding is partly an issue of there are just too many residents that live in that area and that's why we're looking to redistribute that. What you can also see from this map, from a distance perspective, the light red line highlights the walk zone for Mercer. And so all of the elementaries that currently feed into Mercer have a lot of overlap in the walk zone. So that was a consistent theme that we've heard from families. And then highlighted this in a table that kind of shows from a distance perspective, how everything ranks. And so Maple's the closest to Mercer, then Kimball, then Dearborn Park, Beacon Hill, Hawthorne and Rising Star. So I'll show some data as well that shows distance to the other two middle schools. But, you know, this was important for us as we were looking at additional information as it relates to potential changes. So on the highlight with the board, the boundary principles that are last approved in 2013, will also say that we have an opportunity to reevaluate these, especially given that our district has changed so much since then. Also, you know, we weren't consistently applying and using our racial equity analysis at this time. And so there's definitely more alignment with policy 0030 that we can do to these principles. And, you know, that is work that our capacity enrollment and facilities master planning committee, as well as some potential other groups should tap into as we move forward. But these are the current ones that exist and so those are the ones that will guide us. One thing to note with these principles is they are not ranked. So as we'll see, as we go through the scenarios, oftentimes principles conflict with each other. But, you know, it's a matter of thinking about how we prioritize these different principles as we work to a solution. I'll just give one example, so, you know, one example is, you know, being mindful of fiscal impact. And so that may conflict with being responsive to family input and creating boundaries that reflect equitable access to services and programs. Same thing with walkability. And again, we'll see how some of these principles interact in the scenarios. Next one, highlight the community engagement, we'll just share here again. You know, we've had 10 community-based meetings and we'll have some additional meetings up until the 27th for us to be able to share some more feedback from these, from this discussion, as well as get feedback from families. Even once we identify a solution, you know, one of the things that's really important to hear from families is, you know, mitigations or other things that we can do to make the transition as smooth as possible for families. So want to make sure that is brought to the table before the 27th, so we can have that as part of our discussion. But, you know, another thing here, just highlighting that, you know, one of the, one of the things, at least with being virtual, is that we have the opportunity to attend a lot of different meetings and to accommodate the time in which families were needing to meet. We also had several meetings that were ELL-focused or specific community group-focused. So next is what we heard. And so some of the big things that we heard from families in this process was using a racial equity lens in decision-making, using data in decision-making and being clear about how equity is being considered. Again, reiteration that the current overcrowding is inequitable. And so, you know, doing nothing is also inequitable. Despite the fact that this work is challenging and change is difficult, you know, we can't keep what we currently have. Prioritize keeping current school and neighborhoods together. Prioritize continuity of dual-language immersion programs and access to international schools for current and future families. And then maximize walkability and minimize transportation needs. A little bit as it relates to boundary programs and then other considerations. We had suggestions from families around all different types of boundary changes except for Maple. Maple, as I showed in that other chart, is the closest school to Mercer and it also doesn't border Aki or Washington. There were some suggestions to change the grade at some of the other schools so that we could reconfigure. But, you know, we do have a need for all the elementary seats that we have in the area, so it would be difficult for us to lose some of those seats and not create additional capacity challenges. Other suggestions to continue remote learning, staggering class sizes. And then we had both suggestions for keeping the current dual-language pathway and then also suggestions for changing the pathway. And again, as I talk about one of the solutions in particular, there would be some implications as it relates to changes in the pathway. Other considerations, I talked about building Mercer larger than 1,000 seats and why we can't do that. You know, families asked about understanding and evaluating why Mercer's been so attractive and what can we do and replicate at other schools that might make Mercer, that might make other schools as attractive. And then also have really heard from families that grandfathering is important to keep current students at their. And so we'll share some data as it relates to some of the top principles that we've heard. And so ultimately, as we went through all the feedback, as we went through our data analysis, as we talked with families, as we talked to staff, there were three big buckets, you know, that we heard were important, that also align with our commitments as a district. And the first one was using data in a racial equity lens. And so here I've highlighted all the schools that are with, currently within the Mercer attendance area, their equity tier as of 2019, we don't have a more recent one. One thing to note, Rising Star. And that is, as a result of the students served there. And so, you know, we took Rising Star off the table for a potential change because it was a tier-one school. And Rising Star is closest to Aki Karose, which is also a tier-one school. And so we did not want to send another tier-one school into another tier-one school. And then I also talked about Maple and the fact that it wasn't, didn't border Washington or Aki. And so we also took that off the table for consideration. And so that left Kimball, Hawthorne, Dearborn Park and Beacon Hill. And so again, equity tiers in this first column, equity index, free and reduced price lunch enrolled at the school. And so you can see some differences in some of these schools, African-American male percentage, percent non-white, percent ELL and then percent sped, percent of students who are receiving special education services. The next big priority was maintaining walkability. And so I showed the chart for Mercer, but understanding that we are having to make a change and, you know, we need at least two schools to move from Mercer into another attendance area middle school, have highlighted on the left side, the proximity to Washington. So Beacon Hill would be the closest, followed by Kimball, Maple, Hawthorne, Dearborn Park and Rising Star. And then also have highlighted distance from Aki. So Dearborn Park is the closest, then Hawthorne, Rising Star, Maple, Kimball and Beacon Hill. And so I will just acknowledge that this is average distance. And so what that actually means from the perspective of transportation for an individual student is not captured in these numbers. Some of what we've heard from families, as they gave us their feedback, was about the transportation concern of having to get on a bus and the bus routes that are accessible in certain instances. So, you know, we would likely have to, with any scenario that we choose, think about how we would manage the transportation needs for students in the new school that they would be assigned to. And then the last one was supporting dual-language immersion programs. And ELL students has been a consistent priority for families and SPS. And so just a review that Beacon Hill and Dearborn Park currently offer Spanish and Mandarin and feed into Mercer. And then also that then would feed into Rainier Beach. You know, we've talked about the fact that families are not attending Rainier Beach despite the fact that that is the pathway. So as we've talked about dual-language immersion changes with families, you know, they have articulated that, you know, overall, the continuity to high school hasn't seemed, you know, well-planned, well-thought-out. And so, you know, it's important as we think about any type of change that we're also really thoughtful about the impact that it has on dual-language immersion, particularly as it serves as a support to ELL students and access to students of color. And so also just highlighting that this was the very first year that Dearborn Park was, that Dearborn Park students were in dual-language at Mercer because that program had been phasing in. And then again, I just talked about how in line with our strategic plan, we are wanting to support ELL students as well as native speakers within our planning and programming for dual-language. So that leads me to our scenarios. And so at least two schools need to change feeder patterns to right-size Mercer. We have two scenarios that are presented in the bar. One, the first one is scenario 1A, which is, which moves Hawthorne to Aki Karose and then Kimball to Washington. And then the next scenario, A2, which moves. Which. Which moves Hawthorne to Washington and which moves Dearborn Park to Aki. So with that, I just, I'm going to close this and show the maps real quick and then. Alright. So this is the first map, which I mentioned was a change of Kimball to Washington and then a change of Hawthorne to Aki. And so within this map, just wanted to highlight, if I scroll a little bit closer, you can see some of the data points here. Amongst these two scenarios that I've shared, from a size perspective, there's a slight difference in the overall number of students who would be, who are within those schools, who would be impacted in the future. But the number is not super significant. So between, if we look at Kimball and Hawthorne, there's a total of 391 students who are in grade 6 through 8 who attend Mercer. And then in the other scenario, there's a total of 359. And so some of the things, just wanted to highlight here in terms of those priorities that I talked about. Within here, you can see that currently 100% of the Kimball students are within the walk zone for Mercer. And if we did make that change, there would only be a small number of students who would be in the walk zone for Washington. If you look at Hawthorne though, there's still, many of these families are still very close to Aki. If you see down here where Aki is located in relation to Hawthorne. So, you know, as we looked at the demographics across all of the elementary schools that currently feed into Mercer, you know, thinking about our, our guide in minimizing impact to students for educational justice, Hawthorne would be one of the schools that would be included in any scenario. And so that's why it's in both. And again, Hawthorne is close to Aki in this one. And so the next one I wanted to share, and so this one I want to highlight has. And so this one I want to highlight has no, no immediate change on the dual language immersion pathway. You know, not to say that there aren't discussions that we are having just about the current structure of the pathway and the sustainability of it, you know, because we do have some concerns outside of this conversation, just about ensuring that there's enough students to support the the pathway. So then, as we think about this next scenario, which is Hawthorne to Washington and Dearborn Park to Aki, this would mean that we would have to look at changes to the dual language pathway. Because there already is a small, smaller number of students who are within some of the languages within Mercer. If we moved out Dearborn Park, that would mean we would likely have to consider a single language track at Mercer and then a single language track at Dearborn Park and then likely a single language track at Beacon Hill. And so just for us to have, you know, sustainable cohorts in classes within the languages that are offered. That does though present us the opportunity to have, you know, the conversation about that. And Dearborn Park currently offers Spanish and Mandarin and English, but English is not offered consistently. And part of that is because of the overall enrollment at the school. And so, you know, again, there does need to be a conversation about how we create sustainable language offerings within the schools as they currently exist. And then if we were to make any changes. So if we were to look at a scenario that moved one of the dual language schools out of its current pathway, we would have to evaluate then what does get offered at Mercer and then what gets offered at Aki from a a language perspective to as those, as we make those changes.
Ms. Davies, I wonder if we are at the point for questions and discussion for this portion of the conversation?
Yes.
Okay, very cool. Thank you so much, Ms. Davies, for all of your work. I will turn it over to directors for comments and questions before we move into a vote here. So we'll begin with Director Hampson.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, so I think the question I want to ask right now is about one specific, can you go back to scenario one? With that map, yeah, and yeah, thank you. The, one of the things I'm wondering about is there's a, there's a BOC, which stands for, what does it stand for?
Bilingual Orientation Center.
Okay, thank you. At Hawthorne. And and that was one of the engagement pieces that I saw. We, you know, we're getting a decent amount of feedback from families that are heavily invested in the Chinese language program at Dearborn Park, you know, which would, is one of the ones that's up for consideration. But less so with Spanish programming. And one of the, the, I'm just curious to hear a little bit more about what you heard from from those families. And is there, if Hawthorne goes to Aki, is there an opportunity to move that BOC over to one of the other schools that is in the Mercer pathway? Why is it at Hawthorne?
So I will share what I know at this point about the BOC. And then I might have to connect with some of my colleagues to get a little bit more information on some of the history. But in talking with some of the Dearborn Park community, as well as just looking at the data that we have on the BOC at Hawthorne, the demographics of at Hawthorne have really changed over time. And so of all the six schools that we looked at within the Mercer boundary, I had highlighted the fact that Hawthorne has the lowest percentage of students of color, the lowest free and reduced price lunch. And so Hawthorne at one point had a larger percentage and number of students who were utilizing the bilingual orientation center. But currently, we have a very small population at Hawthorne that that is there in that capacity. And so, you know, this did come up in a conversation, you know, that we have with some staff about, could there be an opportunity to move the the BOC to one of the dual language schools? Because that could also be a natural fit. Again, in terms of what we've identified as our goals for, you know, language acquisition and and using language to be able to support students, especially if it's their native language. So I think that's definitely a conversation that I could have with my colleague in ELL. And then, you know, also, you know, you know that I've been in close communication with our international schools administrator throughout all this process. But I would say that there is an opportunity for that conversation and that is one that, you know, could make sense. Director Hampson, did that answer your question?
I'm sorry, I was talking on mute. Okay, yes, thank you. And and then I guess the the other piece that that remains missing for me, here we have kind of African American males represented in terms of numbers. But I didn't get as much of a sense from the community engagement around Black and African families that are at Dearborn Park or Hawthorne that would be impacted by this. And what are, you know, they're not necessarily benefiting from a dual language program at at Dearborn Park. If if there's, particularly if they're have a home language that is an African language. But what is, do we have a sense of what that community perspective is? You know, obviously, it's not monolithic, but can I hear a little bit about any feedback you had from from the Black or any of the East African community members?
Yeah, so I will say at this point, and I actually have another engagement tomorrow with the Hawthorne community to go through these, to go through this scenario with them and kind of talk through, because they were included in both of these. But as it relates to one, just the overall feedback that we've got from families, we had a, I would say is, you know, a small percentage of our Black families participate in the Let's Talk. And as far as it relates to, you know, the feedback that we've heard from Hawthorne at this point, you know, we haven't heard necessarily specifically from those who identify as Black. Some of what we have heard though, from the feedback from Hawthorne families is that they are closer to Aki. And so some families did prefer the idea of of being reassigned to Aki, if that was where they were going to be reassigned. And then we also did hear another sign from some other families that the TAF, the Stand by TAF model at Washington seemed attractive to them. And so that was something that they were interested in. So, you know, heard both perspectives from families as it relates to that. In terms of the question about Aki. And so, you know, we had a community meeting that was both, sorry, Dearborn Park, we had a community meeting that was Dearborn Park and Beacon Hill. And, you know, the majority of the families that attended that meeting were probably from Beacon Hill. And then in following up with the school, you know, they said honestly that one families at Dearborn Park were just fatigued by the the conversation. You know, we had them involved in the last conversation we had about Maple. So they went through, you know, that round of conversation there. And they, you know, preferred not to have a community meeting. They're on the screen all day. And, you know, some of the feedback that we had heard was, you know, not wanting to, you know, have a a meeting and go through this in that capacity. So I did connect with the principal around getting some feedback directly from the, from families at the school and from staff at the school. And so, you know, in in talking with, in getting some feedback from, in that way, you know, the feedback that we had heard is that, you know, families at Dearborn want to stay at Mercer. I will say though, you know, that's what we heard from almost all families. The other thing that we have seen from, you know, some of the data as well as at the school level, and I think, you know, I've shared a little bit about this with you is that, you know, we probably have at at Dearborn Park more more white families within, you know, Spanish. And then we have our East African families that are in English. And then we have Chinese families who are in the Mandarin. And so especially as we think about what that can mean in the future in terms of, you know, who is wanting to access language offerings, there's definitely more opportunity there.
Thank you. And and I I guess I would just say that thanks to a community member who did a little bit of analysis and and you can probably confirm this, that the relative, the transportation cost impact is neutral between the two options, correct?
Correct.
And so, so that's helpful for us to know. And that, you know, I I think in the future, and I hope that we will be there very soon in the future, we need to be offering these dual language opportunities within the school communities where the, you know, linguistically home language base is. And so having, you know, Spanish in a place like Dearborn Park that doesn't have a large Spanish speaking home language population, taking advantage of that makes me think that, you know, we're not, we're not targeting the right language for that school. And so whether we are looking to funnel for middle school students from dual language, our few dual language pathways into that same school, I hope that in future years, we won't have this, that being a factor that that kind of mitigates our flexibility because we will in fact have more robust dual language support system for all of our communities and are truly investing in those individual communities and their home languages. So with that, I'll pass it to the next director. Thank you.
Director Harris.
Sorry.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Chief Pedrosa. I just wanted to add one thing to answer the question that Director Hampson posed about locations and pathways. That is a topic, I just want to make sure the committee knew before it got asked again. That is something that we're going to redo, relook at, not redo, but relook at. We're going to bring together some of the members from the ELL department, dual language, advanced learning, special education, together with the enrollment planning team to look at the whole district and and look at our program services and pathways to really think about recommendations moving forward that we would work through with operations committee. So I just wanted to share that that's in, that's a plan that we have to look at this spring.
And thank you so much for doing that. And I know you all are are very interested in that work and I'm super grateful.
Thank you. Okay, we need to move to the next director. So Director Harris.
Okay, Chief Pedrosa, thank you for that input because I'm most disturbed that we have been careening along with our dual language pathways. And we have a whole lot of history to overcome. You're going to look at it this spring. Do we have a work plan at this point with some with some benchmarks and and dates to meet?
Wes, one of the things we're working on, we're just, it was, it came out of, when we came out of all the community engagement sessions, that became really clear as a need, that we needed a whole systems approach to this work. So after this process is completed, Ash, Director Davies and I will be coming together with a work plan that we'll be presenting to the board at some point through the operations committee to move forward, to conduct some of these, of these, do some research and analysis of all of our pathways in our system.
Appreciate that. And I would suggest that it belongs in two committees, S S C and I, I think is the correct acronym now. Because the dual language pathways has been clear as mud for years. And I am so extraordinarily hesitant to break trust with Beacon Hill and Dearborn Park. And I would like a great deal more robust information about the community engagement. How many people attended? What are the demographics? What was the takeaway from it? And I well appreciate that y'all are really, really working hard. But that data, since we're a data driven district, is hugely important to me. And I'm hoping that we can get a couple of memos out in the interim to give us a better sense of what was said, who was in attendance, the highlights, if you will, and and the numbers and the demographics. I appreciate the transportation cost being purportedly neutral. But part of my concern is that Metro doesn't even have routes between some of the these proposals. If we're doing the Orca Card and if we're not doing that, then what are the yellow bus numbers? And and I absolutely agree and and will take some ownership of the Rainier Beach International High School pathway that was determined after one dual language student enrolled at Chief's South. And we were hoping that because of light rail, that would be a carrot. Apparently it is not. And at that time, it was determined Franklin's leadership wanted no part of dual language pathways. But I guess part of my bigger issue and my concern is we're talking about backing out dual language pathways under a boundary change. And and that seems back asswards to me. It it, I I have significant problems with breaking trust on a program where we've led people to believe that their children have a pathway because of boundaries. I I'm confused and I'm distressed that we don't have a deep dive in what community engagement has been done. And I would so very much appreciate being learned up. And I'll pass to the next director. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hersi.
Hey, can y'all hear me okay? Can y'all? Okay, perfect. Thank you. I've got a few questions. Some are from community, some are my own. Some might be for the record, so just, you know, bear with me here. My first question is, how many kids are in, I mean, at Dearborn Park in the DLI pathway? Can we get a number on that?
So I don't have that number offhand, but I can get that number and get it achieved, you know, definitely by tomorrow.
That'd be great. And then I guess one of my next questions would be, does, do the languages that are offered at Mercer match the ones at the Dearborn Park International School?
Yes, they do. So they both offer Mandarin and Spanish.
Okay, fantastic. The next question I have is around our equity scoring. I have some major concerns. And so I I just want to, for folks on the call, just remind, or just really, I want to know who at the district do I need to talk to about how equity? And this isn't necessarily a question for you solely, Director Davies, but who do I need to talk to about? But who do I need to talk to about how the equity scores were determined? Because I'm sure we all remember the lawsuit that was brought forth by, uh, Michael Wadey from Kimball. Around the inaccuracy of his equity, or excuse me, of Kimball's equity score. Um, and, and I think we need to do an, an audit and make sure that we are actually using correct data. For some of these decisions, especially if, you know, we have a very active PTA at a place like Kimball who can advocate. Versus maybe a different school where the PTA is less active or, or they don't have as many advocates. I, I just want to know what are our plans with ensuring, especially as our communities change and as. Especially the South end continues to grow and as we make these changes, how often are we updating our equity scores? Again, not a question directly for Ashley. So if anyone else can answer that on the call, that'd be greatly appreciated.
I wonder.
I can save that question. I can save that question for later. If I could get an update on that.
Hey, Director Hersi, we update the equity scores every year.
Okay, fantastic.
And we also, we also look at the equity factors every year.
Okay, great. And so how do we communicate? Uh, just really quickly, how do we communicate if an equity score changes? Is it just on the website?
Um, yes, it's, yes, it's on the website. And, and we did, I think there was some maybe materials in, um, a budget work session. That I would point us to as well from last time.
Sure. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I guess for me, as I think about this particular decision. Um, as the Southeast Board Director for the past year, we have had to deal with two major boundary changes. And moving forward, i- i- and it's no surprise to me, quite frankly, that these boundary changes are predominantly taking place. In the part of the city where we have the highest concentration of students further away from educational justice, particularly black students. And this is continually disruptive to, uh, the families in my district. So much so that in, in no, uh, in no. Intentional way, I will say, by anybody who is on this call at this moment. We are, are essentially pitting families against each other and, and quite frankly, families of color. When we are continually having these types of discussions. Um, and what I would really like to see us do. Is to get to a place to where we have a very clear metric for how we make these decisions. Again, I cannot be more thankful to, uh, Ashley and Dr. Pedrosa. For the community engagement and the modeling that they have been doing, just, you know, in my experience with the Maple boundary changes and now this one. I think that they are doing a great job and, and the rest of our district could really, you know, take a lesson from the example that they're setting. But again, this is, this is at some phase got to stop to the point to where I feel as though previous boards have been kicking this can. Due to, you know, being responsive to the loudest voices, um, to, to create political cover in a lot of respects. And what I really want to see, as Consey you were talking to earlier. Is a clear decision-making model when it comes to these types of things, because the last thing that we need. Are schools with high concentrations of black students and other students of color. Um, e- e- essentially competing in terms of their advocacy to, um. Maintain their interest for their children. I think another thing that we need to also be cognizant of is. Even post this discussion, we need to be very clear. About the conversation that needs to be had is why are less of our families excited? About attending Washington and Aki. What are we as a district not doing to support those school communities to make them just as appealing as Mercer? Um, I think that's the real conversation that we need to be having because the alternative to that. Is we are going to have a lot of families who have traditionally had access to our system, continue to send us emails. And, and quite frankly, for lack of a better word, pervert the word equity to, to protect the interest of their children. So I think that we need to do our part as the tops of the system. To ensure that we have a very clear metric going forward. And, and I know that that is of interest to a lot of folks on this call, so I just want to make that very clear. That that is a big expectation from me. Um, I guess the last thing that I will say is if we. After this decision, I really want to know what is the game plan? For us to get to that place. And I, and when I say game plan, I mean timetables. Like, wh- what staff are going to be allocated to working on those metrics and really being very clear in our communication out to families. So that we are not causing this type of anxiety. Um, at, when, when we're making these types of decisions about where kids will end up. And I'll end it at that.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Um, drop a lot of truth there. Appreciate you tonight. Uh, next we'll move on to Director Rankin.
Um, thanks. Yeah, I kind of echoing what Director Hersi said about, um, kicking the can. I totally agree. I had written down. You know, this needed to happen seven years ago. Board, the district and the board knew that Mercer was overcrowded and people dug into their, uh. Or emotional, emotional pleas or, or, you know, whatever ha- what have you. And, and instead of making a decision to alleviate overcrowding. They just didn't make a decision. And now, um, we have families now who have to deal with it. Um, and as, as it was said too by community members, the overcrowding itself is an equity issue. So this has not. Um, putting that decision off has not served, uh, served our, our families very well. Um. I, uh, want to say thank you to, um, Ashley and team for the engagement. That happened. I mean, uh, a lot of times in these types of situations, I think. You know, one, one school community will sort of organize the fastest and make their voice heard and have mo- the most access to information. And, um. Uh, make it seem like that's sort of the right or only opinion. And, um, we've. For better or for worse, heard from a lot of different families from, from many of these schools that all. Um, are, are, a lot of them are asking for different things, which is, uh, on the one hand, you know, we want. Um, uh, to make the decision that families want, um, and that's hard when they're all different. Uh, but on the other hand, um, I think a testament to, um, effective outreach because we are here, you know, we, I. Got, um, at least in my year as a board, my first email in, written in Chinese. Um, so just, so just kudos to that, to just helping, helping families understand what's coming and, and how to prepare and how to make their voice heard. Um, this, uh, uh, one question I have might not have any, have enough significant impact on numbers. But I'm curious about the highly capable cohort at Thurgood Marshall. If there are. Students who in the past or, or still currently, because technically the HC. Cohort goes to Washington. But if there are numbers at all from there, from the cohort. Um, the elementary cohort that would be going to schools other than Washington for middle school, and if that has any impact. That might choose. Choose to go there instead of, instead of Washington if, if their, you know, attendance area middle school is different. Is that question making sense?
This is Ashley.
Yeah.
Oh, Consey, you can go if you wanted to. I, I was just going to say, um.
Go, Ashley, sorry.
Okay, that's a, um, so, um, I, I, Director, uh, Rankin, I think your question is. Um, if we have a change in the service delivery model for, um, um, advanced learning. Um, given that we have cohorts right now and Washington is a school that is. Um, a site for, um, students who are eligible. Who come from other attendance area middle schools. If we make a change in the service delivery, will that impact other middle schools? And so the answer is yes. Um, you know, we do have a, a, you know, a large portion of. Washington, um, students who are currently attending Washington who come from other middle schools. So, you know, many come from Mimi. We have others that come from Mercer and then others that come from Aki. And so if there is a change, um, then, you know, they would likely go to their neighborhood, um, middle school or they'd apply. To attend another middle school.
Okay, but those, those numbers are not significant enough to factor into all of this?
Um, so they, I mean, they are fairly significant, um. In terms of, I would say, probably close to half of Washington's enrollment comes from outside of. Comes from advanced learning students. Um, and then, you know, a large portion of that half are students who come from outside. Of the, um, Washington attendance area. So, um, you know, that's part of the reason. You know, why it's important that we move at least two schools now. Um, but to the concept of, um, a pathway change or a service delivery model change. Um, that is, you know, coming based off what we've discussed. You know, that's a larger conversation that we're going to have because it would have impacts across the system. Um, and so, um, there would definitely be an opportunity for us to look at that. And we wouldn't want to isolate that to just this area. It would be one that we have to have across the whole district.
Okay. Um, so connected to that, um. I'm thinking about, you know, future impacts of the moves that, that we make, um, this month. Um, I, I wish we could have the pathway conversation, programs pathways conversation with dual language. Um, first and then the boundary conversation, but I mean, I recognize that that's not where we're at. Um, because just, you know, purely numbers wise. And distant and proximity to schools wise, you know, it, it might make more sense to move Beacon Hill to Washington. But if that's not where the dual language pathway is, that, it doesn't make any sense at all. Um, so in the, like, in the, I guess. Do we anticipate that these same schools might be looking at another? Middle school boundary change i- in the next couple of years? Or like.
Yeah, so in terms of the, so, so there's a few, you know, you, you bring up, um, a great point about other district conversations. And other capacity enrollment impacts that we may anticipate as we try, um, to ensure that all the. Services and opportunities that students need are available close to home. And so, um, with that in particular. Um, you know, as I was, was talking about, um, the fact that. Um, eh, a change in the HC service delivery, HC meaning highly capable, um, service delivery model would mean. That we're looking at changes across the system. And that also, the way anything gets rolled out, it wouldn't necess- it wouldn't be immediate, right? So we've also identified the fact that we have to have conversations about our dual language, um, pathways. Um, and the language that are offered and making sure that each school has a sustainable. Um, program that MISA needs of our students and what we've committed to as a district. And so, you know, I see us being able to, as we, we've talked about, have that, start that conversation now. Um, map that out and then, you know, any changes as a result of, um, advanced learning changes. Wouldn't start really affecting enrollment for a few years.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Um, and then another question I had was with the distance. You had, you said it was an average distance? Um, is that like average distance of how far away students live in the attendance area or is that like? As the crow flies or, or what does that average distance mean?
Yeah, the average distance is as the crow flies. So, uh, you know, it doesn't take into consideration, you know, where streets are, where he- hills are. Um, it's just, you know, a, a metric for us to be able to use.
So it's like from one corner of the attendance area. To the school and another corner to the school and then the difference between the two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Any final questions, Director Rankin?
I mean, a lot, but yeah. Um, oh, one more question about transportation. And I, I think Director Harris asked this as well. Um, do we currently bus? Uh, do we currently do busing for students in the John Muir attendance area to Washington? Or how do those students get to their middle school?
Um, I don't know that offhand, um, but I can check. I know that Washington does have. Um, a significant number of buses that go to it because of the fact that many students come from outside the attendance area. So I think based off of what we were looking at from this, um, data, Washington had like nine buses. Which is not typical for a middle school.
Okay, so I guess, I mean, I'm asking because, um, you know, uh, Kimball and John Muir are relatively close to each other and, and. You know, about the same distance away from Washington as each other. Um, so I was just wondering what the John Muir student experience is in getting to Washington since obviously it, it happens.
Got it. Yeah, so the, I, I can, I can definitely follow up on that. The one thing I can just share though, as it relates to that, so. Um, I was highlighting before, um, some of the, um, transportation data. But so currently, um, all of the Kimball students live within the walk zone. And so in the other scenario, in scenario A1. Um, we would have a hundred and thirty-five students who would need a bus. Um, eighty-two that would need an orca card. And then there would be, um, about a little less than six students. Who would be in the, um, uh, walk zone for Washington. And so based off of our transportation service standards, that's two buses, um, for, um, Kimball students.
To go to Washington.
Correct.
Okay, and s- sorry, but we don't normally do yellow buses for middle school except for special education? Or do we do?
No, we, we do. We do if they live with, without, wi- within us, with, outside a certain distance. So.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that was a total brain.
No, that's, that's a, that's a great question. That's okay.
Okay. Um. I know, I, I don't think I'll have any more questions without taking us into a trouble.
Thank you, Director Rankin. All right, Director Vera Smith.
Hi, sorry, I'm here. Um, I thank you for all the information, uh, following up. Ashley and I, this information was probably on the side. I'm trying to decipher from it, but could you just tell me? Which scenario, between scenario one and scenario two, which one moves the most students out of Mercer?
So that was, would be scenario one. Um, that was a total of three hundred and ninety-one compared to three hundred and fifty-nine.
Okay. Um, which scenario displaces the fewest number of students of color?
Um, so from a percentage standpoint, that's going to be scenario one. I, I missed that last.
I, it's probably, I'm the tiny frontier and I was looking at the thing. I'm just asking if you know what the percentages are?
Um, so I don't have it combined, but so what we've shown on the map here, that's part of the, um, packet. Is these are, so each of these boxes represents the students who are in, um, those particular areas. So you can see both the raw number and the percentage.
Okay. Um, and so, yeah, and then I'm wondering, um, we had a, a parent, um, emailed in, um, noting the, um. Noting the in, um, integration numbers, um, as far as like which, which pathway would, or sorry, which scenario would, um. Would increase the diversity or recreate an integration of Aki. So I'm wondering, does, do we have, does. Several of the schools have sort of a magic number? So I'm wondering, does, do we have, does several of the schools have sort of a magic number for, uh, regarding, um, integrated schools of where we wanna see, um, schools? Cause you know, apparently last year Aki was, was, you know, ninety-three point five percent students of color. Um, and even Dearborn Park was, you know, ninety-seven percent. I'm wondering, um, you know, we want diversity, but at the same time we want integration, we want integrated schools, I think. So, do we have sort of a, a benchmark of what we wanna be? Or would, do we try to get schools more integrated? Cause do we, you know, just trying to figure out what our goals are?
You know, I'm gonna add that, I'm just gonna speak for this moment. This is a conversation we've had, and that's what I think the work that we have to do in the springtime. Um, and I think also the, the, the CMPF committee needs to be really focused on, uh, when they make their recommendations, um, about what is it that we wanna do when we, especially when we revise our principles, uh, for our schools? Um, is the goal, I wanna say, is the goal, um, about integration? Is it neighborhood schools? Those are really good questions, right? And I think we have to still ponder some of those questions because I think, eh, like we've said, so much has changed since the last principles were, um, adopted. Uh, we are now a district about really promoting and supporting, uh, racial identity and accepting all of our families and students exactly as they are, right? So I think that's the question, that's the tension we have to ask ourselves. And I, I don't think we've fully answered that yet.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate that. I think it's, it's definitely in the eye of maybe, you know, the current board or current staff and, and the communities altogether. Um, I, I'm just, I'm, I'll just say, I know we're short on time already. Um, given the, the data that is available, um, I myself, I know I'm not voting tonight, but I, you know, I myself would lean towards scenario one, um, for the reasons, like, remember you were able to give me of, um, you know, moving the most students out, displacing the fewest students of color. And just, um, as Director Harris, you know, mentioned, I, I'm too very concerned with, um, the breaking of trust for our, our, um, dual language populations at Dearborn Park. Um, it's no small feat to be part of a dual language program. I have two, two schools in my district and I, I've seen first ten, the family, you know, the, the work it takes to, um, just to, you know, her, help her student through those years. Um, and it's a blessing for these families to get to, you know, follow through with their, their heritage, um, language. So, um, anyhow, I know, I gotta move on, but, um, that's where I am in following, I'm giving the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vera Smith. Okay, uh, um, we do have a whole discussion on Daniel Bagley, so I wanna make sure we can get to that before the vote. So I'll just, about five more minutes for this discussion, so I know Director Harris and then Director Hersi. If you could keep about two minutes each, that'd be really great, so we can move to the vote. So I'll go to Director Harris first and then Dr. Hersi.
Uh, appreciate that, Director DeWolf, very much. Uh, question. Were the dual language folks working with the folks that are presenting tonight in part and parcel? And are they on the line this evening is my first question. And my second, um, frankly, comment would be, I well appreciate that Mercer has been packed solid for years and years and years, but I don't know that it's previous boards that didn't move the can or kicked it down the road. Because with all due respect, we did not have assistance from staff. And Director DeWolf, I believe that you were with me asking those questions for at least two years in the past. Thank you.
I'm gonna be really brief, uh, just quickly, cause I know you need to go to the vote. But, um, yes, uh, Thad Williams, Dr. Williams has been part, and a partner with us through all, every step of the way. And we're really excited about his vision for dual language, which, um, we're still working with. He's met with all the principals in all of the schools. Um, I will, I, I don't know if this committee knows, but I was actually on the original dual language committee that brought John Stanford National School to the district. Back then, the languages were chosen on a business model, on what businesses told us they needed for language. The shift around dual language is now s- supporting and directly the model, what do our students need? So that's a shift that sort of the district sort of has to, to bring on is, how do we shift from the business model to the student, to the, to what our students need? Because that will actually drive the business model. So I just wanna show that that is something that he's in discussion with, with us. And it's part of the instructional discussion we need to have. So, um, yes, agreed on that. Um, and then, um, yes, I just believe that he's not, I don't believe he's on the line here, but it'll be part of a bigger discussion, as I mentioned before.
So he actually is on the line.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, just wanted to reiterate that and just to echo Consey's, um, point about, um, um, that working so closely with us in all of this, but has attended community engagement meetings with myself, um, to hear from families, um, attended principal conversations. Um, and so, um, you know, excited for us to continue that work together.
Yeah, and I will add that actually Thad and Ashley, uh, co-presented at CSECT around this topic. And I will send that video to all of you.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll move to Director Hersi.
Hey, thanks so much. Just for clarity, I was referring to board directors in twenty thirteen, so no slides to any of my colleagues. Much appreciate your work. The, uh, questions that I have, yeah, so the questions that I have, um, the first one is concerning, um, uh, for Rising Star, one of the questions that came from Community. Just clarifying, they are not being considered because of their distance and their equity score, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, fantastic. The last question that I have is concerning, um, given that, you know, the South End is growing at an exponential rate, there are new condos that are popping up every single bump, it seems like. I'm wondering, as we move into, you know, this, this new season of gentrification for our part of the city, I, I'm very concerned that we are going to be in this position again quite often. Um, and I'm wondering, what are we doing now to work with? Eh, and I asked this question during the Maple Boundary discussions as well. What are our metrics for predicting enrollment, predicting family move in? Are we working with the city? Um, are, are we working with any other government agencies to kind of get a, a leg up on the changes that are happening in terms of housing in specific areas? To make sure that we are, are being, um, or at least using a, a level of foresight to determine where we think hotspots are going to be for new families, new kids? And adjust accordingly, uh, earlier than we have in the past.
Mm-hmm, yeah, um, great question. So we, um, we do work, um, closely with the, with the city. And so, uh, my staff has a demographer and the city has a demographer as well. And so, um, you know, we meet with the city, um, regularly to just talk about changes across the city. Um, our demographers meet to talk about, um, changes that are happening. And then we actually also have, um, an education and, and housing manager, um, who, um, is, um, within another division. But, um, we work closely with that, um, role to look at, um, new housing and particularly housing, um, um, for, uh, low income families, um, and families, um, at different, um, income levels because those tend to have the biggest impact on student enrollment. And so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to sit down to, to either share with you or sit down and kind of talk you through the way we, um, monitor that. Um, there's a way that we can kind of forecast based off of, um, what type of housing it is, how many units. Sometimes we go visit, um, some of these units. But, you know, we work closely, um, internally and externally, um, to look at what are, um, some of those, um, additional developments that are happening and to see, um, you know, what impact, um, that may have. Um, you know, even, I remember probably five years ago at this point, um, going out to Sandpoint and, um, probably my first interaction, um, with Director Hampson and talking about some housing that was happening out there. So, um, you know, we do that constantly throughout the year. Um, and so that does help us think about, um, where growth is happening and what impact that may have on schools as it relates to our, our forecast for the future.
Thank you very much. I would love to have that conversation.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
One, one other quick point that I just wanted to clarify because it came up. Um, Director Hersi mentioned, asked this in terms of Dearborn Park. Um, so about eighty percent of the students there are in, um, dual language immersion.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Well, it is seven twenty-eight. I really appreciate this discussion. And, oh, as always, uh, Ms. Davies, your work is so appreciated here and we are so grateful, um, for all that you do for schools. So I would ask for a motion now to move this item forward to the board for approval. Do I have a motion from one of the directors on the operations committee?
Uh, I can make the motion. In the bar, there are, is a blank line, so I need to motion an option, correct?
Correct.
Um, I mean, based on what it sounds like, um, people are, are more supportive of, I will move, uh, that we put this bar forward with option one to the full board.
So wouldn't it be one A?
Oh, sorry, this was so I was confused, um, yeah, one A.
Scenario A, A, A one, yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, directors. I, I have a motion for approval of option scenario A1, which is, um, as described in this meeting today. And second, it was moved by Director Rankin and seconded by Director Hersi. So I'll now ask for a vote of the operations committee members. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Which clarification? Is that for approval or consideration, Mr., excuse me, Director DeWolf?
Yes, I, I, I asked for this to move forward for approval.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, all, I don't think I heard any opposition, so I believe this motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, directors. Ms. Wilson Jones, can you just confirm that we had all three on the yes, or the, on the aye?
Apologies, Director DeWolf, I missed the question.
That's cool. I was just, I was just saying, can you confirm that we did the three ayes for a motion?
Yes, I did hear, um, three ayes from yourself, Director Rankin and Director Hersi.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just, I wanted to make sure I got the question for Director, uh, Harris. And I, I just wanna make sure I heard three. Okay, so Ms. Davies, first of all, thank you for the first, uh, presentation. Thank you to directors for the, uh, the incredibly insightful conversation and feedback and certainly a much, much work ahead of us. Uh, Ms. Davies, I know you have a, an update for us on, um, student assignment transition plan, so I would love you to be able to provide that. If, I, I don't know if ten minutes feels like, um, good enough amount of time. Does that, does that feel appropriate? You may be muted.
Yes, I was muted, sorry. Um, I think I finished, should be, should be just fine. I had my, I had the presentation up and I was muted, I couldn't, um, couldn't do all the things. Um, so I'm gonna.
It's been a day.
I'm gonna talk briefly about the student assignment transition plan. Um, and some of the updates that we're looking at for this year, I will just highlight. Um, we have one, um, that's the more substantial update. Um, and I'll kind of spend most of the time talking about that. And then two updates that are really just language updates. It, it doesn't make any change to, um, uh, any of the, the meaning or the offerings. Um, it just c- clarifies, um, what's there. So the first is, um, removing the separate Montessori and contemporary programs at Daniel Bagley. Um, and moving to one single program for all students. And then the other two updates that are smaller, clarifying language about international backglow program. To more accurately describe the program. Um, it's currently listed only as, um, being at Ingram and it's also at Ranger Beach in Chief Cell, so that needed to be updated. And the last was just about updating the name change for South Lake, um, to Alsiguiama High School. And so, um, again, just making sure that our documents reflect, um, um, school updates. And so I only have a slide, um, to share on Daniel Bagley Montessori again, cause those other two are, are just, um, you, you know, language updates. Uh, but, um, Daniel Bagley has identified that there are demographic differences between who is in their Montessori and their contemporary, um, programs. And so Daniel Bagley is actually the last Montessori school that we have in the district. Um, Lesha and Graham Hill were formerly, um, Montessori schools, offering, um, a Montessori section and a contemporary section, which would just be traditional classroom. And so, um, uh, over the past few years, um, those communities have come forward in wanting to make those changes because they have also identified that there are equity issues, um, in the way that, um, that was playing out in their school. And so, um, school leadership and staff identified that this was a problem, um, as part of some of the race and equity work that they were doing, um, as staff. And so I would say, you know, a huge shout out to our district staff who facilitate that work and that leadership and that training for staff to be able to work, um, amongst themselves and identify, uh, things that they see as issues in their building that they wanna tackle. Um, and so, after identifying this as an issue, um, they created a race and equity instructional design committee, um, that consists of school leaders, teachers and parents to talk about what, um, these changes would look like in terms of if we were gonna transition out of a separate Montessori program, what is on the other side of this? And so, they've been meeting, um, they were planning to start meeting last spring, but then again with, um, school closure, they started meeting, um, this fall, identifying that, you know, we would be in this virtual space for a while and this work couldn't wait. And so, um, you know, essentially what they, um, uh, have identified as, uh, collective was that moving to a single program, um, would, um, allow them to be able to blend the best practices from Montessori and contemporary, um, while creating, um, a more inclusive and equitable community again, such that there are not big demographic differences between the two groups and such that, um, there are perceptions of differences amongst students. Um, and so within this work, they've also been doing, um, focus groups, um, with students, with families, um, with, um, BIPOC families in particular. Um, and so, um, um, ultimately, the change that would be reflected in the student assignment transition plan would be that we would remove the Montessori, um, uh, uh, element such that, um, right now in the plan, eh, um, um, there's a, there's specific tiebreakers if you were trying to apply to a, a Montessori program. And so we would just take out that language. And if families were interested in applying to Daniel Bagley, they would just apply directly to the school, using the same enrollment processes that we use for any other, um, school or program. And that's it.
Okay, okay, well, thank you very much. Ms. Davies, I believe, uh, this concludes our presentation from you tonight, is that correct?
That is correct. Um, I guess there actually is one other thing that I, that I did wanna mention. Um, so we, I, I did not include this in the presentation cause I didn't want to confuse, um, you or families. Um, but we did, I did just wanna circle back on conversations that we had previously about, um, uh, um, the Native Heritage Speaker set aside at McDonald and John Stanford. And so, um, we had had that conversation earlier about, um, the fact that we really wanted those twenty percent of seats to be for, um, uh, families who identified that as, um, a native language. And so in working in conjunction with the schools, um, we've identified, um, uh, protocol at the school level that, um, they would use to, um, essentially work with families who identify that they're native. Um, and so that isn't a change to the student assignment transition plan because there's no language in the plan that, um, uh, speaks to that. Um, but it does continue to align with, um, you know, the work that we've been talking about and also what we've committed to, um, within our strategic plan. So just wanted to make sure I circled back on that. And that's why you don't see it in this presentation because there's not specific language in the student assignment. in the student assignment transition plan around that. And then I'm done.
Thank you so much, Ms. Davies. I know we are about ten minutes over time. I want to make sure we can get folks to their evening. So if folks have more questions, I would, I would just encourage you to please reach out to Ms. Davies on the updates that she provided around the student assignment transition plan.
Can I just ask a quick clarifying question on that? It's quick, I promise. So what you just presented on the student assignment transition plan was just an update. There's no, we're not taking action now and that's something that's coming before the board at some point, or it's just an FYI, these changes are happening?
So, so it is, this is a second bar. So the updates are actual updates to the plan. And so we, the actual student assignment transition plan, we have reflected those three things that I mentioned. They are redlined updates in the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, directors. We appreciate you spending your evening with us. I know we've been going for about three hours now. Please have an enjoyable rest of your evening. Get to your families and your, your self-care time. It's been a very long day. Really, really appreciate you all and your service. And there being no further business on tonight's agenda, this meeting does stand adjourned at seven.
Director DeWolf, may I interrupt for just for a second? I think we are looking for action on this second board action report today to committee.
Okay, that's totally cool. I did not see anything in my talking points on that.
Sorry, I combined them and made a general apologies for that.
That's cool. I just want to make sure, so we, you, you do need us to take action now on the updates to the student assignment transition plan. And I'm not necessarily sure how that is supposed to look.
So we do need, we need a motion to move that out of committee?
That is correct, Director Rankin.
I, I move I move to do that. What, what should the motion be to move the approval of the redlining?
There, there was a second board action report, so it'd be moving either for approval or consideration the board action report for next year's student assignment transition plan.
Thank you. Making a motion to, for approval on this bar?
Which second? The approval of the student assignment transition plan for 2021 through 2022. This was moved by Director Rankin and seconded by Director Hersi. Would you two on the operations committee need any further discussion on this bar? Or should we move to a vote?
I am ready to vote. I have a couple minor questions that I felt comfortable asking over email and, and then talking about it introduction.
Of course, yes, and we will have time at the, the, January thirteenth and January twenty-seventh. So hearing no objections to moving forward to a vote, all those in favor of approval of the student assignment transition plan for 2021 through 2022 as described, moved by Director Rankin and seconded by Director Hersi, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, this motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Apologies for the, the confusion there. And thank you, directors, for sticking with us through this committee of the whole. We don't do these often. With that, there being no further business on tonight's agenda, this meeting does stand adjourned at seven forty-three PM. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.